Could we have the roll, please?
Alderman Ted Grady?
Here.
Alderman Repella? Alderman Repella? I do not see Randy present.
Ready to go.
We can just move forward for right now.
Alderman Nichols?
Here.
Alderman Taylor?
Here.
Alderman Savick?
Here.
Alderman Langdon?
Oh, he left.
Alderman Langdon?
Yep.
Alderman Schmidt?
Here.
Alderman Tom Grady? Alderman Tom Grady?
Here.
Alderman Repella?
Here.
Here.
First item on the agenda this evening is a motion to temporarily suspend the rules of the Common Council and Mayor to provide for a... Do we have a motion?
Mayor.
Alderman Savick?
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'll move that we temporarily suspend the rules of the Common Council and Mayor's meeting here so that we could have this teleconferencing budget meeting.
There's a...
I'll second.
I had a second. My Alderman Ted Grady? Could we... Could we have a roll call, please?
Alderman Ted Grady?
Here. Aye.
Alderman Nichols?
Here.
Alderman Taylor?
Oh, it's aye.
Alderman Savick?
It's not here. It's either... We're voting on this temporary suspension of the rules.
There's a lot of discussion going on back there.
Alderman Savick?
Aye.
Alderman Langdon?
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Alderman Tom Grady?
Aye.
Alderman Repella?
And... He said aye in the background there.
Yes, I received an aye. Motion carries as zero.
Thank you.
Mayor, I'd ask you that you have Alderman Repella suspend his phone call and get back to the meeting.
Come on, Randy. Let's go.
Item E is people from the gallery to be heard on matters pertaining to the agenda. Is there anyone who wishes to speak at this point?
I would. Sandra DeDill Taylor, 545 Broad Street. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. First, I usually try to chime in on the budget every year. I'm just a taxpayer. I don't know all the ins and outs of the government as well as any of you, and I'm simply looking at the dollars. Any comments I make are not directed at any department or individual, strictly looking at the dollars. As you know, we have a hard time marketing Manasha because of our high tax levy in comparison to neighboring communities, and I'm only looking at how we can reduce that levy without impacting... So tonight, I know you have the Police Department, the Health Department, and Community Development, and I'll try to make this really quick. So, the Police Department, I do just want to point out that the K-9 replacement fund for the next... There's $4,000 budgeted for the next five years, $20,000. It's a wonderful program. I think we were the first in the Fox Valley to start it. I just want to remind everyone that when this program began, it was through donations, and it was a community-supported event. It has now become a taxpayer-supported event, similar to what happened at the D.A.T.E. M.A. National Fire Rescue. I'm not asking to eliminate it. I just want to emphasize that it went from a donation to a tax. Secondly, um, the... This is page 438. There are quite a few items between this year and next year for renovations of the Police Department building, and I do recall a year or two ago, might be more, that they did another renovation for a evidence storage building, I believe. I have no problem. I think the Department needs a renovated facility, but my question is when we're looking at close to a half a million dollars in renovations over the next two years, should we shouldn't hit the pause button and maybe do a feasibility study on the entire facility to see if perhaps we need to replace it in another location? Is the growth... Is the city growing, or are we stable? Because the library is also looking at major renovations, and between the police, the fire, and the library, there's very limited parking in that area. I just think before we spend a half a million dollars, maybe we should look into if that building is going to serve us in the future. Lastly, under the Police Department, and this might be part of Community Development, it's code enforcement. Joe Paul Zina is our code enforcement officer. I think he's doing a great job. I... Unfortunately, I do have a question. On page 58 of the detail, it appears that his 2020 budget for wages alone, not benefits, was $54,800. The requested budget is $2,000 less. So I hope Joe's not getting a decrease in salary, is my first question. That maybe someone could clarify that. My concern is that he keeps getting more and more responsibilities added to his position. He is now doing residential building inspections. He's... I mean, this is a lot of work for one individual. I would like to know if any of the CSOs or if there's any clerical assistance available to him that... To him that he could have an assistant to help us. My biggest opposition to the Strong Neighborhoods program was the fact that code enforcement is essential to a strong neighborhood. Without it, I don't care how much money you throw in renovations to houses if your neighbor has junk homes, or if there is nothing compatible in the neighborhood that's going to bring down the residential property values of the whole city, and it's not attractive to new home buyers. Code enforcement is essential. We were one of, again, one of the first in the Fox Valley to offer this service and provide this on a full-time basis. I'm very disappointed that I think Joe's abilities to get his job done are being curtailed by Community Development, the Mayor, and the City Attorney. I have a feeling there are no citations being issued, or if there are, very little, because the attorney has simply already stated it's not worthwhile for her to take anyone to court. So I would like those questions answered, and I really wanted to push for stronger code enforcement. So that is for the Police Department. Very briefly, I'm going to jump over to Health Department, specifically the Senior Center. Everyone loves the Senior Center. I myself qualify as a senior to attend there. We offer programming to anyone within Winnebago County. Much of the funds are through grants, but we still are spending an excess of $100,000 a year for programs. In comparison, our neighbor to the south, NINA, programs 260 days a year with the YMCA, including a full-time Senior Center Activity Coordinator and a one-half-time Assistant to Plan, Organize, and Supervise Programs and Activities. Their budgeted cost for 2020 was $15,500. That's not even close to what we are spending. I think it is time, especially if the library is looking at becoming more of a community center in the future. We are the only ones in the Fox Valley. Appleton no longer has a Senior Center. Fox Crossing doesn't. Harrison doesn't. NINA doesn't. No one in the Fox Valley does. I think that $100,000 is going to be needed in the future for numerous expenses that we have coming our way, not to forget the street reconstruction. And lastly, Community Development. I could talk an hour, but I'm surprised the mayor let me go on up in this line. I have a lot of concerns with the Strong Neighborhoods program, number one. I would personally like to see that program eliminated. The people that love it are the people that receive benefit from it, including some elected officials, and I might even say the mayor indirectly benefited.
Excuse me, Mrs. Taylor. Excuse me, Mrs. Taylor.
Well, you don't cut me off on that one.
You are not going to accuse me of getting any Strong Neighborhoods funds. I did not receive any funds.
I said indirectly. You are not...
I did not receive any funds, and I did not even...
Mayor, it's not a debate. Let her speak.
And if she wants to continue talking about that, I will cut her off.
Furthermore...
Finish. Let her finish.
Today, as far as I'm aware, we have had no rental. We have rehabilitation, no two-family to one-family, no light elimination. All of the things that were proposed and were sold to the Common Council have not come forward. It's funds that were... Are not grants. These are taxpayer dollars. They should go back to the taxpayer. This program has been abused. I ask that it be eliminated. I also ask that our annual contribution to the Fox Cities Convention Bureau, I don't remember the name, it was usually around $20,000, that be eliminated. I'm talking dollars here. I'm trying to reduce the levy, and none of this is going to adversely affect our community with cutting any of these programs. And the last thing I do want to question while we're getting started here, on page 11 of the operating budget, under donations and gifts, it shows the proposed budget for donations this year at $16,000. Fine. But then, if you go to page 318, the funding source for numerous projects, including Blossom Canal, has donations exceeding $1,185,000. So we have quite a bit of a discrepancy here. I'd like to know how we can jump from $16,000 to over $1 million. I'd also like to say that this should be... These donations need to come before the council before it's done. I think donations are fabulous. I'm thrilled that we are giving donations, but I think this is something, even if the people want to remain anonymous, this needs to be something through the council and not just the mayor. Because I am questioning, I'll bring it up in the park board later, but the Blossom Canal, that's over $675,000 budgeted this year, and I don't even know if we own it yet, do we? Thank you.
Okay, moving on. We're going to take a quick stroll through the budget before we get on with the Police Department, but I just wanted to take a quick stroll and talk about some of the major high points as we move along.
Mayor, there were no other people from...
There were no other people other than the Police Department on the call that I could see.
Okay.
So, just wanted to talk a little bit about the background for different things that we do: equalized values, revenues, debt, tax levy, and our rates. And the first one is equalized value, and I just wanted to show everyone that our equalized value has been growing over 200... Close to $250 million here from 2013 through 2021, and we have several rather large projects up on the drawing board for the next couple of years as well. So we would probably expect that to even grow a little bit faster than it's been growing the past couple of years now. Revenues, the state provides a fairly substantial portion of our revenues between shared revenues and highway aids. It's almost a quarter of our budget, and those revenues, you can see in 2011, were much higher, and they've been flat pretty much ever since. This year, we gained about $15,000 and lost about $15,000. So, pretty flat in our revenues that are coming from the state. The state keeps collecting more taxes but doesn't want to share those taxes with the communities, and we're the ones that really provide economic development and provide those services that people want to see in their communities. So, we're down $350,000 since 2011, and those are dollars that had to be made up with local taxes then rather than taxes.
Question. Can I ask a question, Mayor? Does the state explain why they keep the money?
They... They had a budget crunch in 2012, and they cut shared revenues. That was also with Act 10, and they basically mandated that employees pay more towards their pensions and that we do more with less, and that's what you see, that huge drop at that point. And we've never really went up since then. You can see the same thing with highway aids as well. They really have never gotten back up to where they used to be after those, that 2012-ish years, so.
Okay, thank you.
And they have budgets to hit too as well, but their budget's going up dramatically faster than most local governments. Here's a couple of things that have been good and bad the past couple of years in revenues. So, Vicky has been very good with ensuring that we get our library aid from the counties, and what that is, is the money for people that are using our library that aren't living within the city of Manasha. So we get nearly $600,000 between Winnebago and Calumet County, and that has went up $32,000 this year. So that's a good thing that she's been able to continue working on that path. We do get a payment in lieu of taxes from Manash Utilities. That's on both our electric utility and water utility, and that typically goes up a little bit each year, about 1% to 2%. Payment for municipal services, anyone who has a state facility, a UW facility, a prison facility, state office building, gets a tax equivalent for what that building would pay in taxes if it was a private sector building. I believe that this is at approximately 50% of what the actual taxable revenue would be if we taxed those buildings. These numbers... The total amount for this program hasn't went up since I've been mayor, and they keep adding buildings, so it continues to dwindle to each community based upon the number of buildings. We've been seeing a $2,000 to $5,000 loss each year on that. The city... The state did introduce a new revenue stream. They are limiting our cable chip franchise freeze and reducing those over the next few years, so they are now trying to offset that with this new video service provider revenue. So we did receive about $40,000 in those funds this year, and you'll notice the forestry budget went up fairly substantially this year. One of the reasons is we did apply for an urban forestry grant of $25,000 to do some outside services on our Emerald Ash Borer Plan. If we don't get that grant, then of course we wouldn't hire the outside contractors to do those things, but those are some of the major swings in revenue that we've seen this year. Our geo debt, you'll see that this year we've seen a little bit of a jump in our geo debt. We've went down every year since 2011. This year, we did do temporary financing for public works facility, and you'll see that we jumped about $11,000... $11 million this year. Next year, we will put that in permanent financing, which is a revenue financing, so it won't affect our geo debt ratio and debt limit, which is something that bonding agencies look favorably upon. So we want to keep that 30% to 40% of our total limit is kind of the sweet spot for when we're bonding in the open market, and we're right in that area, so that's good. Our tax levy is growing about 2% less than what inflation is, and you can see that our tax levy hasn't changed drastically over the years, but it continues to increase, but not as fast as inflation. If you guys have questions as we go along, please let me know. I had to move your pictures underneath my screen so I can't see if people are wanting to speak, so just speak up. Our levy limit this year, based on net new construction, is $10.4 million. Our proposed levy is $10.5 million. We did not use our full levy in the previous years, so we are proposing our levy to be above that levy limit based on net new construction, and it would use about half of our previously unused levy limits. So, we still potentially could go up by about $70,000 if we wanted to. I believe we can only go up about $40,000 before we hit the expenditure restraint number. Our tax rate right now, we're going to see the equalized rate drop slightly. Our assessed rate, we're still finalizing. It looks like the assessed rate will go up somewhat based upon our assessments are not increasing as fast as our equalized values. So, stay tuned. We'll have that before we're done with the budget process in total. And then, in general, I always like to have this budget at a glance slide, just kind of showing you the main areas where we spend the vast majority of our money. Our Public Works, Fire, and Police, if you look at those numbers, we're at 25, 18, and 15, and then the rest are fairly significantly smaller, but all equally important. And if you look at an average home based upon where we think our assessed rate will come in, we're looking at about a $20 increase in taxes compared to last year for a $150,000 home. Now, I just wanted to kind of point out a few things in our departments, and since police is coming up, I'm going to let the chief take care of that afterwards. Public Works, we've really worked hard on managing our PWF building. We have completed our street reconstruction projects this year. There's some finishing touches on the Abbey Street project that we're working on with Nina, and engineering's played a pretty big role in the opening of two subdivisions. One is the end of Grassy Meadows and one being an extension of Woodland Hills. Next year, we're working again on street construction as our main thing and getting a little bit further ahead in some of our working drawings, but also we plan on installing that first underground stormwater retention system for the Brin, and that's a new project for us that we're doing a lot of the work on in there as well. Not a whole lot of activity either with the Common Council or the Mayor's or the civic commemorations budget. Our big thing here is that we didn't have fireworks, so you'll notice that we only paid a deposit on the fireworks last year, and we'll use that as part of the 2021 show. Fire rescue is, again, working on succession planning, but also working on this joint recruit academy, and that was very successful. And they did have a regional agreement to provide service in case of disruptions with some of our staff becoming infected with COVID, so we haven't had to use that, in my understanding, at this point. We still want to try to resume that automatic aid program with Appleton Fire Rescue, and we're working on some other items with succession planning there as well. Nancy's on the line as well, but her major project this year, of course, was COVID and pandemic response, and next year, hopefully, her major project will be implementation of that vaccination plan and working to start bringing us forward again on leading a little bit more of a normal activity. HR and the attorney, we've spent also a lot of time with COVID, training our new city clerk and her assistant, and negotiating the new police contract, and I'm guessing the chief will speak a little bit about that. We want to finish the wage study that we had started working on this year, next year. We want to talk a little bit about health insurance. We've experienced some difficulties with our HRA and want to speak with employees about what some other options might be and what the costs might be if we do that, and work on HR audit, which is a lot of security and succession planning as well. So, we also have a new finance director this year and a new finance manager, which was a big step forward. We also, at the beginning of this year, refinanced a fairly substantial part of our debt through the State Trust Fund, and that saved us significant funding, closed another TIF. And next year, you'll hear a little bit about some new IT infrastructure that's very crucial to our service here in the city. Our contract with our assessor is up, so we will probably be looking at an RFP to see about the best way to provide that service in the future, and also migrating our property tax software off to Winnebago County so that it is a little bit easier for us to be able to track things and work together with the county. Our library, we started working towards some new facilities planning this year back in, I think it was February, and COVID kind of blew up a lot of those plans. They've been working on virtual programming and ways to get the library back open, but we've also done some upgrades with equipment. Our main program next year, though, is that facility planning design, looking at fundraising. I'm recommending that we use some funding that wasn't spent this year to help with that facility planning and also some succession planning items, and we can talk about that more when we get to the library, but always working on lifelong learning and programs to encourage the use of the library. Got 2021 accomplishments and projects I see here for Park and Rec, but this year, we finished our first phase of the Jefferson Park Plan, the Nature's Way Trail, and worked creatively to provide some rec programming. During the pandemic and the pool, we were not alone with our programming not being used as heavily as we thought it would be. Many of our neighboring communities also saw a very large drop-off in usage of those programs, but people were very thankful that we did offer some supervised activities for their kids over the summer. The 2021 budget, I think one of the big things that you may have already noticed is that we reapportioned how the directors' wages are placed throughout the budget, so you'll notice that the rec budget is down, the other budgets are up, and that's because we placed Megan's salary throughout all the Park and Rec budgets rather than just the recreation budget as Brian's was. She's been working to enhance our programming offerings and also work with our local businesses to do some sponsorships and programming. We are looking to do Phase 2 of the Jefferson Park program, and that would include a community playground. We're not sure when we can start working on that based upon the pandemic and when we can start doing more group meetings and participation schedules to help design that. And we're happy that the state DNR did give us access to some software to help update our urban forestry database, and we're hoping to get that grant as well that I talked about before. Community Development, Sam has been very successful in selling residential lots out at Lake Park Villas as well as some of our commercial lots. We've closed TIF 6, and we have hired a commercial building and commercial electrical inspector, which is really important to keep our projects moving swiftly. We want to work next, well, this upcoming year, in 2021, on the redevelopment of the ShopCo TIF 14 area, further development on the Bonta and Gilbert site. We have a startup project there, and then he also has two chapters of the comprehensive plan that we were looking at upgrading... Updating in 2020 that we didn't because we couldn't have those citizen participation sessions without having the ability to have open meetings. And on... At that, we have the workshop scheduled with Police, Community Development, and Health Department tonight. I don't know if anyone has questions about any of my quick run-through. If not, I will turn it over to the chief.
Thank you, Mayor. Can you...
You have a PowerPoint as well?
I'll maybe share my screen.
Hey, Chief, before you go.
Yeah.
And this will be for everybody that might be speaking, and I say this every year. Can we make sure that as we're going along and we're on a certain topic, you talk about what page we're discussing in our budget so that we can follow through in our budget book?
Certainly. I'm just trying to get you guys to my other screen here, which of course probably won't. As luck would have it. I keep moving all of you around, which is kind of nifty. Let's see here.
So it's easier said than done, right?
Yeah, I know, I kind of laugh at you in council meetings, it's myself that, oh hey, wait, here it is, I get to choose it here. All right, hopefully you should be seeing a police department screen now. Buy a thumbs up and a show of hands, it looks like it is, perfect. Well, welcome to our presentation for this time, as everyone remembers what we try to like to do is tell you, because the mayor pointed out that a good portion of city funds do go to public safety, we want to make sure that you know what you spent your money on this past year and what you'd be spending your money on next year. So we kind of give you a little brief update as to what we did and what we're planning on doing. So. I guess one of the things that kind of struck me is the mayor was going through his thing, but I just wanted to kind of diverge from the police department thing for just a moment. Is the general obligation debt that the city has. I just really think you as a group should just take a moment and pat yourselves on the back. When you look from two thousand eleven to now, you've reduced the general obligation debt eighteen million dollars. That is an incredible amount and to think of how we've been able to maintain services in the city during that period of time while that was such a concentration of effort is it's a tough thing to do, so I really give the group that's been involved and those that have joined the group over the last couple of years, the fiscal discipline to really be able to do that, so. Pretty amazing stuff. So when you look at two thousand twenty, it's been a rough year. Right now, I don't know if Matt Lenz, one of our lieutenants, is going to be able to come back. He ended up having to leave just a few moments ago to go deal with another person passed out in a vehicle, which it sounds like was a vehicle that we were involved with in a pursuit last night. But again, with the training that we give our folks, we discontinued the pursuit, but we had enough information to potentially identify the person at a later date and apparently he was intoxicated or having some issues again tonight and it sounds like we have him now this time. Or you take the case of earlier today where we have seen a huge increase based upon COVID of suicide and suicide attempts. We had a young lady who was having a very rough day, went in and taking a knife and was stabbing herself and cutting her arms and locked herself into a bathroom. But yet our officers, you hear so much of police deseculation. And I know many of you are preaching to the choir, but I think it's a good thing for you all to know that it's truly how we do our jobs here. So instead of exacerbating that situation, our officers were able to make contact with her and talk her down and get her to come out of the bathroom and get medical care with, without anything. But I'll tell you, these things really have been taking a toll on our folks. When COVID first hit in twenty twenty for our folks, we were here. We did not have an altered work schedule, we did not have people, my guys and gals would love to have worked from home. And as I've told people in the past, if you guys can think of a way that we can make a traffic stop from home, let me know because our guys would sign up for that in a heartbeat. But they've been here and there's some surveys and some other things where we talk about the peer support program, they're going to get into some of the information. We're concerned, we know that a number of our folks are really reaching out for help. Because of the stress that they have, not only with the COVID, there's so much unknown in the beginning of the year as far as, you know, am I going to get sick, am I going to die? Obviously, we know most people will survive it fortunately. And then you add the civil unrest and the hatred of police. Fortunately, we live in a wonderful community, there, everyone in this community for the most part is very supportive of the police department, which I am truly thankful for. But you still can't get away from it and anytime a person turns on the TV or sees something on the internet or what have you. It's some of it's justified, some of it, some officers have made some really poor decisions. And we hope that the training and the things that we do here that we're not the next one that would be looked at negatively and that's really one of our goals with it. So.
Chief, I got a question on that?
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you, I hope. I've used it proudly to say my wife and I used it seventeen years ago SAP. And I hope the officers and you, Angie and yourself and Matt put out there, hey, don't be, don't think this is bad doing this. It is great, it does work and if they're having some trouble, I hope they look at that too, Chief, thank you.
Yeah, no, I certainly appreciate that, although I did, you're right. EAP is one of our options, we also have a peer support program that we've put into place countywide since two thousand fifteen. And that's one of the things that I go back and say awesome, and then I say, oh crud. Because since two thousand fifteen, we've seen the usage of that basically double over the last five years. Countywide, we had approximately twenty to twenty-five usages the first year, that was the year of the Trestle Trail and the Nina shootings, we knew a lot of officers had some trauma from those. And we are well over fifty to sixty uses now a year. Which again, that's why I'm like, great that people are reaching out and trying to get that help, but at the same time, turn, you know, that law enforcement in general is experiencing that type of trauma, so totally agree with you. And then what we're going to talk about later with the wellness program is really curtail two police officers and the stress that they end up getting on this job. So with the COVID, what I'm going to do is turn it over to if he's still there, Nick?
Can you hear me?
Perfect, Lieutenant Thorne is our investigative lieutenant, he just kind of wanted to let you know what's going on crime wise as a result of COVID or this year with COVID.
Good evening, so in looking at the statistics this year specifically from March first through October thirtieth, we've certainly seen some areas that we've increased from crime trends and we also have seen some decreased areas. Specifically with domestic abuse related crimes, whether that be arrests, custodial arrests or nonviolent domestic arrests, we've seen an increase almost double. So from in two thousand nineteen, we had a hundred eight and then in comparison, two thousand twenty, we're at two hundred and four. For that time period. Additionally, nine one one hangups and that could be anything where a resident calls nine one one for any, any variety of reasons. That's increasing as well, up to four hundred and twenty-seven calls per service. And then we look at fraud crimes, fraud related crimes. And something interesting to note with frauds, these can be pretty labor intensive because obviously we have to not only investigate initial accidents, we're also looking at completing search warrants and subpoenas to find out who was involved with that related crime. Another uptick that we've seen is insensitive crimes and internet crimes against children. Something interesting to note, child sex abuse material on the web has grown exponentially in recent years. In two thousand nineteen, there was sixty-nine point one million files reported to the National Center for Missing and Exploited Children in the US, which is triple that, which was seen in two thousand and seventeen. We've also seen an increase in these cases. They're resource intensive, you know, it takes an extensive amount of time, data mining, executing search warrants and subpoena, subpoenas viewing what could be thousands of images. Collaborating with outside agencies for resources and then the prosecution aspect of those crimes as well. Hundreds of hours going to these types of cases. Two specific examples that I'd like to cite from here this year that our team investigated was one involved a hundred and forty thousand images, which also contains several thousand text messages. This specific investigation took place over the course of numerous days. And the majority of the images were nude, postpubescent females. That ended up resulting in several felony charges for the. Another case that I want to briefly discuss is one that involved over five hundred recovered images of child pornography from college age storage accounts. This involved a resident up in Manasha where the images were disseminated. We ended up working with the National Center for Missing and Exploited Children to ensure that the images were recovered and taken off the web. We also worked with the victim to assist them in getting resources such as counseling. This investigation itself took several weeks and it involved this specific case itself, so this officer dedicated his time to doing this. So the interesting thing with this case was it was time sensitive, these cases are time sensitive where we have to get on them immediately because as we all know, things on the web can circulate very fast. So the, you know, the longer we wait to try to assist and get these images off, the longer and in poor places these images can be disseminated to. So this specific case resulted in several felony charges for that suspect as well. As I noted earlier, we've also seen some decreases in areas, accidents, either reportable or nonreportable accidents, those appear to be going down slightly. Alcohol related crimes, although that the OWI is underage drinking or bar violations that we've looked into, those are declining slightly. And disturbances, these are not domestic related. These are, you know, not where somebody's living together and there's no department, domestic partnership right here that's met. So we've kind of seen it down, down, that we're trying to bet as well. One of our programs here in Manasha is the MCAP, so Manasha Community Addiction Assistance Program. So that is for referrals that are sent for our citizens to improve treatment and recovery services for our community. And these are for people that are suffering from alcohol and drug dependency issues. Our calls and referrals for this are generated by our staff members, the police department, the fire department or other staff members throughout the city. And looking at that specifically, we've seen that double, that in the amount of referrals that we've sent to this program, so that's telling statistic as well. In terms of overdoses, and this is a pretty significant topic, in Winnebago County alone, we've seen the number of overdose deaths compared to last year double. So last year, roughly, there was around, you know, fifteen to, excuse me, fifteen to twenty deaths. And this year, we're looking at ballpark of forty. So that's, you know, family members that are lost because of overdose related deaths, so this is impacting our communities.
Thank you, Lieutenant Thorne, appreciate it. I guess one of the plug with the MCAP program, it certainly isn't a police department program, it's something that the health department really kind of did the heavy lifting to get it into place and I think we've been one of the more active ones of actually getting people into that. We have no idea how many of those referrals may have ended up in the deaths or in preventing a death because we're getting those folks into services. Other agencies in this area have attempted similar types of programs, but without getting into specifics, it would take a bit too long. Our program works. Other agencies that have done it have had one or two people, maybe a year or over a couple of years that have taken them up on their program. And for us to have forty-five folks that we've helped get at least connected with services and some of them have followed through and are on the road to recovery is phenomenal. When we look at the number of deaths that have happened this, this year so far in twenty twenty, they are substantially up in Winnebago County as Nick said. However, when the numbers come on the wash, I think we're going to see that Manasha itself has a smaller share of that. I truly think that this program is partially responsible for it. So next area to go to is civil unrest police reform, this is something that people have asked. President Trump did sign, sign a executive order trying to address police reform. Again, I've already said that, you know, in this area, we've been very fortunate, in fact, there were a couple protests that were planned for Manasha. And what ended up happening was is they got no, people got no wind behind the sails. I'm hoping it was because they have a fair amount of trust and really don't have a problem with the Manasha Police Department, they ended up doing things in other communities. So again, we're blessed and thankful that that hasn't taken place here, but when we get into police reform, there's basically four areas the President Trump had wanted to address, well accreditation, boom, check that one off. You guys know that a couple of years ago, we went through the accreditation process and we're supposed to do it this year, but because of COVID, we got pushed back to next year that we'll go through our first reaccreditation process. Banana Chokehold, boom, that one's good to go as well, something that we have never trained. It's something that could be done as a deadly force type of thing, but it would be a very extreme circumstance, it wouldn't be just a way to control a person. We don't do it here, we're not going to do it here. Excessive officer database, we've got two things that are working for our favor for that one. One is we track our use of force issues and Lieutenant Thorndyke stepped out is one of the ones who compiles that and if we see any trends of people inside, not excessive, just in general, because what we have found with excessive force is it's generally not a one-time thing, an officer tends to build up with excessive things over the years. So if we see any trends, we certainly can address it specifically with an officer or we can do different training to try to address it before it becomes a problem. The other side of that, that the President's order has is that you're not swapping around bad cops. And the state of Wisconsin actually has a system in place that if an officer is fired or leaves in lieu of a internal investigation that applied in the computer system, so we would know about that. And then finally, the mental health. But mental health, people know that we've been big on the CAT training and really trying to make sure that our folks are de-escalating situations and really trying to treat people at the very core level. It's been successful for us, so I'm really, this isn't to say that we're done, if this isn't like a, while I do the checkmarks, this means that we're moving in that direction and we have a very good start on what I think is really wanting product society as a whole going forward with police departments. Advanced management training, W Chief Handcheck ended up, or is in the process, she just finishing her command college. Obviously got a little delayed with COVID, some of it's moved online now. She actually had a class today, but she'll be finishing up with that very shortly. We deployed a new K nine tracking system for deployments, training records themselves. We achieved full staffing, kind of. We have one person right now who has been activated by the military, he's in the reserves and he's helping out with COVID efforts. So while we are full staffed, we're not truly, we are on paper, but we are not as far as the schedule goes. Deployed a new powertrain, Lieutenant Albrecht, did you have any quick comments on that? About the new car?
Okay, yeah, we deployed it soon, COVID really delayed the delivery of the vehicle and then also many of the parks, it is currently at the Uppitters. And I just met with them and the rep for all of the new technology we put in it and it's being programmed. Hopefully, it will be out on the road middle to end of next week.
So the cool part about this one, Matt, if you want to explain, because I know a couple of the aldermen have been very sensitive to environmental issues and what have you, if you want to kind of, what's different about this one?
Sure, the new powertrain, it is a hybrid powertrain. For more company, with a hybrid powertrain as an option for a police vehicle. It still has all of the features, performance features, meta, their police vehicles' history. To save us quite a bit in gas, Ford's projections based on our usages, we're looking probably at fifteen hundred to two thousand dollars per year per vehicle. So we're excited that this will be a step to both help the environment and reduce the cost that we need to spend on gas.
Thanks, Matt, we also need some teachers to officer in charge program, that was one of those things that we still have the program, we actually made it more user friendly. In essence, the person before would get bounced all over on the schedule, so that's a person who's in charge of the department when there isn't a lieutenant on duty. And it was a, it was a tough spot because people would get bounced all over and we made some changes to make it more palatable and really kind of reflects the way people want to work in this day and age. We reestablished the bike patrol program, Matt Spiegel, Lieutenant Spiegel, if you want to chime in on that real quick?
Sure, hello everyone, this is something that we were really excited about, we were able to get two bikes purchased for twenty twenty. They're actually e-bikes or pedal assist. And with that, we were able to get the guys out on the road, they really enjoyed them, one of the biggest comments that I got back was it was nice staying very active and maintaining, I don't know, I guess kind of a workout in a sense because they're constantly pedaling, constantly on the road. COVID has put a little bit of a damper on that, we weren't able to, as Meg. But of those two officers, we did have on the bike patrol program, we were able to get them to some more international police mountain bike association training. They got a lot of good information out of that and as a result of the new bikes, it generated a lot of interest with the other. And as a result of the new bikes, it generated a lot of interest with the other officers. So what we're going to do is we're going to have a program put together based on that training that they receive to put new officers who are looking to become a part of this program through as well, so we can get them on the road.
Thank you, Lieutenant Spiegel. We're excited to get that back up and running. And so it's been kind of a neat thing that we've done. We've done it for a whole bunch of years, dropped off for a bit. So I think with the new bikes and the new program going forward, we should meet stuff with it. We completed other fees, built updates and hallway projects to the PD recently. We have some changes and preparations and continuing to try to get the building out of the eighties as it had been kind of stagnant for a period of time. Lieutenant Lenz was going to be the one that's going to talk about this next part. It's basically, we replace our firearms on a regular basis and we want to make sure that the firearms that we carry are appropriate for what we might unfortunately be called to do. And one of the things that is out there is a different sighting mechanism on the firearm themselves. And we've been doing some test and demo on that and we're considering changing that. This isn't going to be any additional cost to the city. It would just be a matter of as we change out the firearms that the officers carry, that we might be going to a different handgun. So anyhow, without him going into more specifics, that's kind of the high-level part of it. We did work with Public Works to identify a possible traffic system. We know that that's something that's been of interest to the council in the past. My understanding is it may have been cut out of the initial, it was in the budget. It might have been cut to the budget that was presented to you. But Director Adam Alex will have more information with you on that one. But Adam's been phenomenal to work with on it. We got some information from a couple of different vendors and worked with him to kind of identify it. Then the last point that isn't on here because it's fairly recent news is, as the mayor alluded to, we do have tentative agreement with the union. The union did ratify it last Friday, so you will see that on the next personnel committee meeting. I think it's a good deal across the board, but without showing my biases, when we see it in a little less than two weeks, hopefully everyone agrees with it as well. The budget numbers, as we're looking at today, do reflect the, the contract. We're able to change some numbers to, and some of them actually down of what we originally had thought to, to reflect what the contract says. So what are we going to do for 2021? Hopefully take a deep breath and it's got to be better than 2020, that's all I can hope for. But the acronym lead is what we try to do every day. Every call, every person that we deal with, let's listen, explain equity and dignity. That's what we try to do with every contact that we have. And I think we're pretty successful. We have a whole bunch of new folks and I think they really kind of buy into the way that we do policing here. Lieutenant Schules is taking over as the accreditation manager. Deputy Chief Handcheck, former Lieutenant Handcheck, when she was lieutenant, she was the one that was our accreditation manager and he'll be doing that. He's also going to be helped out by a couple of our contacts. Cydell, Cydell is going to be one of the ones that's going to help him out as well as Lindsay to get all the data and information together for the re-accreditation. Wellness program, we're going to talk about that in a bit, so I'm not going to go into any detail with that right now. One of the things we really want to try to do is maintain that authorized staffing level. It's been a rough year, like I told you, and if we can keep our numbers the way that they're supposed to be, we know that that decreases employee fatigue, burnout and overtime. We're also going to make a whole bunch of our training was obviously canceled because of COVID. So we have some things we really need to make up on and we'll do that next year. Let's realize that we have a really bunch of great, smart people. We've been talking for a number of years that we want to do insert. So instead of sending people to X Y school, we realized we can do a lot of good training here with some of our such matter experts. And we did our first in-service last week and the week before, woke up our folks. It was a four-hour block and I think it was pretty well received by our folks. And then we're also going to be deploying a body cam system or trying to, and we'll go into a little bit more detail on that in just a few moments as well. So how's our budget looking compared to last year? Well, we are going to be under budget for next year. I'm guessing it's going to be approximately $200,000 under budget. And that's again, because we've been short-staffed for a portion of the year. That's where we generally make up most of our, most of our money. Wages are going to be under nineteen thousand, salaries are going to be at least seventy thousand plus. And with our person being in the military, he's obviously not collecting his salary right now. Because of COVID and the lack of training and for a period of time, people weren't taking vacations, what have you. So there's variety of different things, but overtime will certainly be under budget this year. Now, we have experienced a few folks here that have tested positive for COVID. Now it's creating some overtime and some problems here. I'm hoping we can hold to that twenty thousand under budget number, but we're pretty close. Health was under seventy-two thousand dollars, which I know all the member of Powell is probably smiling about that because he's always concerned about health insurance costs. And that was actually because a lot of our employees ended up choosing the cheaper plan. And we had budgeted, because we didn't know we were going to have the different plans when budget was created. And there is at least one employee that ended up going off of our insurance, which obviously saves us money. Dental, I'm not sure what happened with that number when it was devised last year, but, but it was incorrect based upon the people that we had on there. So that one's going to be a little bit over budget. And again, because the wages and overtime and salaries aren't all there, we're going to save a little bit on retirement. Auxiliary, as we know, really hasn't had many events toward this year, so they're certainly going to be under budget. CSO programs can be a little bit over, so we kind of worked the two of those out. Crossing Guards, we didn't have school for a good portion of 2020, so that's going to be under. Jail charges, jail wasn't taking people on our warrants, so that's going to be under budget. And animal charges, that's one that we continue to see decrease on. I think people like their pets now more maybe, and you know, COVID-wise, they're watching them, so they weren't running straight. So one of the things that we just kind of wanted to present to you to get some ideas or thoughts behind it is to let you know the problem we have right now. When I was here twenty-five years ago, I was one of about two hundred applicants for the position. For some really cool reason, and I don't know why, we had approximately forty-five applicants in this last process, which is phenomenal. There's much larger agencies that I know had twenty to thirty applicants, if that. And a couple of times we only had ten to fifteen. So the job of a police officer, I think with a lot of stuff that's going on in the world, isn't exactly the most attractive thing. So we're not lowering your standards, but we realized that we might have to put people through the academy. We've done that a couple of times now. And the scary part that we ran into is when our person went to the military in September, if you would have just totally hung it up, we would not have been able to get that person unit producing until next August. August of 2021, if someone leaves in September. That's because the academy is run three times a year and the fall academy had already started. We'd have to go through a full hiring process, get them into the January academy. They graduate in May and then by the end of August, they'd be through our training program and then they'd finally be unit producing. So we have a huge backlog if we end up losing an officer at any point during the year by the time we actually get them unit producing, so to speak, so that they're actually taking shifts without having to be in a training position. So what I wanted to point out is, look back twenty-five years. How many people leave over every year for the past twenty-five years? So numbers here on the left is nineteen ninety-five all the way through to 2020. And this line here represents a number of about two point one. We know pretty much set in a clock, with the exception of four years in the last twenty-five years, someone is going to leave the department next year. And, you know, I've kind of said it to our people and they're all thinking they have a target on their back. So not that we're wanting anyone to leave, obviously, but we just know for a variety of reasons. So what are some of those reasons that people leave? Retirement. If you look on the far right, we have thirty-one sworn positions. And where my cursor is kind of scrolling around here, in the last five years, we had nine retirements. That's one of the reasons why the budget's been actually pretty good as well, because obviously when someone retires, they're at a higher wage and we bring them in at a lower wage. So that part of it's good, but it's been tough for us. Nine people in five years has, has been pretty substantial. We've had a lot of knowledge grow at the door. We will not, so as far as retirements in the future now go, I could go next year, somewhere between next year and 2024 is when I'll go. It will have a spread, we'll have maybe one or two in the subsequent years and then we'll have a little bit of a gap after that. The next one I call is mid-career ones. I, I've heard some rumors and I've actually heard some people in other communities and some elected officials throwing some stones around and saying that there's terrible things going on in this department and we have these mass exodus of people leaving. Well, you can see that's clearly not the case. Last several years, we tend to lose about one person. Twenty eighteen, we ended up losing two and actually one was in the very beginning of the year and one was in the very end of the year. The person we lost in twenty nineteen was, one that left is, is part of an internal investigation. So we really haven't had an issue with retention. But we also know that sometimes people leave. And if I would actually point to the people in the lines on many of these, sometimes it's to go to a different department for schedule reasons, perception of opportunity. But a number of those folks have also left just because they aren't from this area. And sometimes they move to go back home. And I'd say probably half of them since two thousand and seven have left just to go back home, so to speak. The next group is what I call PTO ones. These are the ones that do not make it before they're off their probationary period. And I haven't lost anyone in this year, but one to two a year. And, you know, sometimes is while we have a very good vetting process, until you actually get people into the job and have them experiencing it, they sometimes really don't have an idea what the job's about. One of which we lost, he was a great guy and I'd say it if he was sitting right in this room, ended up not liking the sight of blood. You would have thought that before you get into the job of a police officer, that you might encounter blood once or twice, that he may have not chosen this career. But great guy, wish him the best today. I see him every so often, he's doing well. But those are the kinds of things that happen in our PTO program. So when you stack kind of all that together, this is what it looks like of each of the different categories. And then if we take out the retirement side, just because we know, like I said, with the exception of myself, sometime over the next couple of years that I'll go and then a couple of other people sporadically after that, it still shows that we're going to lose approximately one person per year. Could be as high as two. So what we're wanting to do is we know that we're going to have about a $200,000 surplus. And this isn't something that, it's not in the budget. I don't know how we taxfully do this. But what I would ask of you, and I, I'm not sure how the motion is or I'll have to talk with the mayor about it, if this is something we could potentially proceed on, is we'd love to take a portion of that money and just put it aside. Kind of like what we do for vehicles and what have you. And so for example, we'd love to put someone in the academy right now for January of 2021. Knowing that someone's probably going to leave the next six months, we're going to offset that salary by putting someone in there and technically having a thirty-second officer for a period of time because someone's going to go. So we probably wouldn't draw from that money at all. But if by some chance it's one of those years, like we had a few of them, that no one leaves in 2021, we would have that money, so we're making sure that we're not going to go over budget. So that's kind of an ask that we, we have and that certainly would reduce on overtime or reduce on employee fatigue. And it really, it doesn't cost any more than what's already been budgeted and paid for by the city. So something to consider and we can certainly talk about it, whatever you'd like. So then talking on the budget and for Alderman's seven X request, we are on page forty-seven, new budget list. So wages, based upon the recommendation and the approval that you folks gave on Monday night in the personnel committee, all the wages and the salaries for the non-represented folks are showing a two percent increase. Last year we did a job analysis, if you will, and a couple of the positions here that we identified that perhaps are undercompensated are the traffic liaison position. So we are proposing a fifty percent increase for that position. A dollar for the administrative assistant position and that one is actually, in my opinion, very much underfunded. Doing very much the same work as some of the people over at HR and is being paid considerably less. We feel that that's a fair step getting her in that direction. And that's a part-time position as well, so the, the dollar amount impact is, is pretty inconsequential. And then we have that evidence custodial position. And when we realize the responsibilities that she's in charge of, she's in charge of the guns, the money, the drugs. It's a very high-profile position. And we believe that that is certainly something that should be compensated slightly at a higher rate. And the dollar an hour increase for her would be just when she's working in that role. So when she's doing her normal job as a communications tech, that would be regular sound. Is what we have proposed and put into these budgets for this year. The salaries are reflected with the agreement with the union that we talked about as well as the pay increases that we talked about for Monday. The overtime, we just did the two percent increase on that from the previous year, I believe, for that one. Health insurance, the member of Powell, this is a good one for you here, down thirty-two thousand. So based upon what people had selected for the previous year, we're assuming that people will stay on the same plans for next year. And based upon that assumption, even though premiums that you saw on Monday night are going up almost ten percent, we're anticipating it actually going down in our budget. To get our dental back and correct the issue that we had for last year, that one does show a little bit of an increase. Janitorial, that's kind of handled by Public Works, but we've been advised that there's going to be a slight increase by the vendors. So that's what that increases for. Under the 2012 account, that's a new one, you're going to see that there's a mount in there, but this is one that's offset by a revenue. So basically, from the finance side of things, they like to make sure that we have a revenue. If we have a revenue that's offset, so instead of putting that on one side or the other, so basically that's the credit card fee that a person pays. They pay a $500 warrant, charge a certain percentage to it. That's where that certain percentage goes to, which pays for the credit card fee. So the city does not absorb any costs for the person using a credit card. First professional management fees under twenty-one oh six, that's increased to grand. Every other year we go up and then we go down and up and down because next year is the year that we have to do bartender licenses. And while that is still coordinated by, or now coordinated by the clerk's office, we still do the background checks and have to run the person and there's a cost involved with that. But again, that one's offset by the amount that people pay to get the bartender licenses. Telephone, IT department did a nice job in negotiating a different deal for cellular phones and we're going to save about three grand, we estimate, in the police department as a result of that change. Building, they're expecting, based upon comments that were made earlier by Ms. Taylor, she, you know, indicated the building's getting older than it is and we see an increase in the cost that it takes to operate the building every year. So buildings requested an increase on that one. Twenty-nine oh four, the vehicles, we're going to buy a couple and we'll hit, Lieutenant Albrecht up in a few moments. Again, just to mention what we're doing with vehicles for next year. Computers, we replaced more computers this year, so that we're seeing to go down next year. The thirteen fifteen, thirteen eighteen accounts, those are our equipment accounts and just cost of living. One of the big problems that we have is our ECDs or our TASER units. We've replaced most of them, but we still have a number that are basically not being serviced by Exxon or TASER any longer. Those cost about a thousand dollars a unit and we need to get rid of the old ones because there's no support for them. So when they go out, they're out. So we need to continue updating those. And then we need to do some different body cams. And for that one, I will turn it over to Lieutenant Albrecht, who is our body cam guru.
Okay, thanks, Tim. Yeah, our body worn camera program, we've had body cameras at our police department since about 2015. We went to a full deployment, meaning every officer has had one assigned to them since about 2017. The current manufacturer is V-View. We had selected them when we first looked at body cameras for multiple reasons. One of them was cost. The officers liked the way they operated, they were easy to operate. However, last year, it was a couple of years ago, Exxon bought V-View and now they are no longer supporting our cameras. We recently had to migrate our software to an internal software, to save on cost. They are not starting any new contracts with these products. And about the middle of last year, our current cameras went out of warranty and are now reaching the end of their service life, but no more support for them. So we've formed a committee last year. We used officers from the road, officers from investigations, some lieutenants. And we kind of formed a committee to evaluate models to see what would work for us, both from the use perspective and the functionality for officers and also finding something that we hope we can fit into our budget. As many of you have probably heard from some of the larger departments, police departments who don't have these programs are spending extremely high amounts of money, not only for the hardware, but also the infrastructure then to hold and maintain all of that video. So after the committee looked at a few different options of body cameras, they selected the Panasonic body camera. What's unique about the Panasonic cameras, they're coming up with a brand-new platform. The first deliveries of these new body cameras are started this month. Deliveries of large orders are going to come out in January two thousand and twenty-one. Tim seems to have left, so I don't know what the next slide is. But anyway, the highlights of this system as to why we selected it, their new camera is smaller, smaller and lighter than their previous model. There are a few neighboring agencies who have used Panasonic's body camera since their inception. It also integrates with our It also integrates with our current squad video system. We utilize the. Retrator as our in squad video system across our whole fleet. And from an officer management perspective, these body cameras will link with those squad cameras. Managing it, maintaining it, using one software platform. Will all work together. We officers won't need to utilize two software systems. Our evidence custodian and court liaison who manage all the video will only need them. So it increases our efficiency when it comes to the back end of that. It also has a replaceable battery, one of the. Neat features of this system and one of the only ones on the market is that it has a replaceable battery. So if during your shift it runs out of life, you can swap it out if the batteries go bad, which we all know happens. You can purchase a new battery and not have to buy a whole new camera. Our current system, once the batteries go bad, the cameras basically junk too. You have to send it in. This platform also offers multiple mounting options for officers. Throughout, you know, our. Patrol division, people wear them in different spots. People have different uniform carriers and where they want to attach them varies widely. If you're in a plain clothes assignment like in investigations, you may want to mount it differently to your uniform or to your plain clothes outfit for the day to. To utilize it in the best manner and capture the best video that you can. This platform allows us to choose. Many different options. It also comes with a standard three year warranty, which is one of the higher ones. And therefore, we're hoping to get. A long life out of them. You can extend that warranty if you would like up to five years. However, we would have to pay for that. But if these are any indication of the squad video system, we've had the squad video system with no issues ever since we've deployed them. So we're. We're hoping that the reliability of these is going to carry over and be just as good as as the other products that we've purchased from Panasonic. So when it comes to the numbers. To outfit our whole department with the same number of cameras, docking stations, the hardware and the vehicles to. Network between the squad video system and the body camera system is going to be about fifty thousand dollars. Ten thousand of that is for the hardware and the vehicles, forty thousand dollars is for. The rest of the system, the cameras, docks, uniform mounts and the three year device licensing. To so that we are licensed to use the software through the life of the warranty. So looking at funding options, that that's a huge hit to. Our budget, that that would be a large amount to to come come up with at one time. So what Panasonic does is they they do offer a lease and finance option, which we didn't look into, but we found out that. If you go that route, you're going to have about a six and a half percent finance charge. Which based on the three year financing that we were looking at so that we would have them paid off by the time the warranty is up. That's going to add two to three hundred dollars a month if you went with a monthly payment option. The other option is to purchase it outright. I'm going to let Chief Stike kind of go over the. Option of how we think we can maybe make that work with our current funds available to us.
Sure, go ahead. Thanks, Mr. Albrecht. Appreciate it. Alderman Grady, I see your mics on. Did you have a question?
Yes, yes, I did. Thank you, chief. I don't know if lieutenant can answer this or not, but. What's the budget account number for this right now for next year?
Good question. So that actually. We have ten thousand, so. Complicated answer, I guess. We have ten thousand dollars budgeted for it and where that is actually lumped in is under our IT services. Fund. So it's represented in that large number, which is one thirty four eight twenty four for next year under. One hundred oh eight oh one, five twenty one, twenty nine oh seven.
Twenty nine oh seven.
So.
Okay, I just wanted.
Albrecht was saying, so we had ten dollars earmarked because that's basically around what we've been paying for the VVIEW cameras. That was kind of on a lease to own sort of thing, but that was a zero percent interest. So. Certainly made most sense to not pay any more than you had to every year if you're going to do it for free. So there's really no, there's a little bit of an increase because I think it was a little bit under that historically. So we have ten thousand dollars in the budget for next year for it. If we wanted to go the lease option, we could do that. And where Matt was talking about, we actually have about ten thousand dollars that he had already set aside and budgeted for this year. For the hardware for the vehicles. So we're we got ten grand of it already covered. We have another ten thousand in essence covered if the budget would be approved as presented, which leaves us a shortfall of thirty thousand dollars. So we can certainly budget, we can certainly, you know, finance it as presented. The other option that we would have. Is based upon the vehicle replacement schedule that we have, as you all know, we've been putting along, putting away a certain portion. For our vehicles that when we have a year that we have to replace four vehicles. We're not going to come to you and ask for a hundred and forty thousand dollars for vehicles. We try to budget the exact same amount of the cars every year. So next year we have three vehicles that we're planning on doing, and that's pretty much going to be covered. We're going to have to take a little bit out of that slush fund that we've accumulated over the last three years. And Matt, do you remember offhand, I have to look at my notes here, what is our vehicle carryover? It was sixty three thousand into this year, I think, something like that.
I'm sorry, what our planned carryover is from this year to next year?
Or to next year. How much money are we going to have in that pot?
Next year, we're planning on carrying over about eighty six thousand. And I guess if the budget is approved as presented, we would start the year off with a total of a hundred and seventy seven in that budget. But then we have to consider what we would be purchasing or the planned purchases and take that out of that a hundred and seventy seven thousand.
So of that money, if that's. If we want to save the six percent finance charge, if this would be approved and we'd go forward with it. We could take that remaining thirty thousand because we're not going to need it in twenty twenty one, nor are we going to need it in twenty twenty two. Not that whole portion, I think twenty twenty three or twenty twenty four is when we would have the amount of vehicles that would have to tap off that. So in essence, we would replace that ten thousand dollars every year by this ten thousand dollars we already have budgeted and have historically have budgeted. So instead of putting it into that account that Alderman Grady asked about. You would see our IT budget go down ten thousand dollars for the next couple of years after this year. And you would see our capital expense would go up ten thousand. So it'd be a wash if we would want to do that. Uh, yes, another question. Well, no. Oh, everyone's good. Oh, you don't have a charge. Alderman seven X.
Thank you. I thank Alderman Nichols. She was on before me. I'll let her go.
Okay. I'm not good at this.
Are the cameras only good for three years?
Are you, are you speaking of this model?
Yes.
No, they're not only good for three years. That's just their basic warranty that they offer. We can keep them. Longer than three years. We could elect to extend the warranty for longer than three years. That's just their their base warranty.
Well, it says here that there's a three year device licensing.
Correct. So with all the Panasonic products, including our current squad video system. In order to receive all of their software updates and. New software releases, it's kind of like you pay for your Microsoft Office licensing. There's a yearly fee. So this this cost, this fifty thousand dollar total includes all of the device licensing for three years. Because if you buy it in three year chunks, it's cheaper than if you buy it each year. So this proposal gets us through. Those first three years. And at the end of those three years, what's which we've been finding is. Technology changes so much in three years, they may have a new platform. We may need new hardware. We're not anticipating that. But this kind of sets us up for. Both three years and then we can plan for a level budget amount if we would purchase it outright. We aren't going to have any software costs. We aren't going to have any repair costs because they're covered under warranty. And one thing I forgot to mention, I guess during my initial summary is. The nice thing about this system is we already have the infrastructure to. Deploy it. It uses the same software platform that our squad, in car squad video system uses. So we don't have to develop new software. We don't need IT to implement new software. We don't need new storage systems. I know their budget and their proposals may are going to probably include some updates to these systems. But we can implement this right now with our current infrastructure.
How old is the hardware in the vehicles that you use?
Well, the vehicles, last year we we finished replacing them to their most current high definition system. I think our oldest system is maybe four years. Our standard definition systems, we were, we had. Gotten at least eight years out of all of them. And even once we replaced them with the new high definition. Software and hardware. We still haven't had any issues. So I'm I'm confident that Panasonic is going to be putting out a good product. So I'm not concerned that we. Are going to be in dire need of a new system after the three years.
And I believe our.
Thank you.
You bet. I believe our current cameras have lasted about since two thousand and twelve, so about seven, eight years. So something like that.
Yeah, our current software platform has, we've used it off and on for that long. The current cameras we've had, once, once they've. Hit that three year mark. You know, we we start to have some issues with them. But they're. But since the company was bought out, there's nobody to stand behind them anymore either. So.
And then I guess one other point to raise is. The three year licensing so far with the in squad cameras, that licensing fee has dropped down to five hundred dollars for the three years. So it's it's not like we're going to get hit with a ten thousand dollar licensing fee in three years when that licensing is up. Great question. Alderman seven X.
Some of my questions were answered right there. When I look at this. To me, it seems like a lot of money for. This type of technology. I have, I have a strong feeling that. Because this is the new technology that people want. That we're being gouged because we're government. I think fifty thousand dollars is outrageous. I would think, I would have thought that. The total cost for something like this, including the licensing, would probably be like maybe between ten and fifteen thousand. So I don't, I don't get this. And I know that when body cams became an issue at the beginning. The the federal government was bending over backwards. Congress was giving out money left and right. So I was wondering that. Other than the two funding options that we have here, did we look at other funding options? Because it just seems like a lot of money for just body cameras.
Yep. Matt, did you want to talk to some of the, I can tell you that. The average department, well, our size department is spending between fifteen and twenty thousand dollars a year on body cams. That's about what Axon is charging and that's what most of the other agencies have. So I know our neighbors to the north and the south are using Axon. And they're they're spending considerably more than the ten grand annual cost. Matt, I don't know if you have any other insights with it. I I agree with you. It's, it seems ridiculous, but. Yeah, Matt, Matt, do you have something?
I I guess the other information I provided with this is this platform gives us the option of. Keeping all of this in house. We've tried cloud storage, which you have to pay monthly to store, you know, to to maintain the data. We started VV with that. We've reverted back to housing all the data in house because we do have the infrastructure. And why pay for something for outside if we already can handle it inside? And. You know, like Chief Stike said. Many of the other platforms are going to be considerably more expensive than this. So I know this is a high price tag, but this is one of the more reasonable ones we found.
Yeah, you kind of touched on it a little bit before about. You know, in three years, technology changes and even with products when they come out. Remember when your VCR first came out, people were paying eight hundred dollars for one or whatever. I'm wondering, are we at that stage with these body cameras? Because I just find this re. I do understand the other costs. I don't know what it costs per camera, but I just think this is seems like an outrageous amount. And I'm not saying I don't think you guys should have them. I just, from an interpersonal feeling about it, it just seems like. That dollar amount is. Just high, very high.
I agree.
Randy's got something. I'll let Randy speak.
Okay.
Thank you. So the forty thousand dollars. That would be for the cameras. And the dock state, all of that stuff. How much, how many officers are going to have the cameras?
So we, we would purchase, that's planning for thirty. Thirty cameras. That allows us to outfit each officer with one, every patrol lieutenant. All of the school resource officers who use them greatly in their, in their offices at school with the requirements to record juvenile interviews. Because the school system doesn't have. You know, recorded interview rooms or that capability. And then we also outfit our our CSOs, but we only have one camera assigned to them. So we we basically, anybody who goes out on the road with the exception of Chief Stike and Deputy Chief Handcheck. Has a body cam available to them.
I I like the camera issue. So that comes out to about thirteen hundred dollars every year we're spending on a camera for each officer, roughly. If you take thirty officers and over the forty thousand dollars, so it's about thirteen hundred dollars per officer. What?
Over the lifetime of it. That would be, or unless you're saying you pay it all for one year, but then you have no cost then for the next several years.
Understood. So it would be for a three year period, Tim?
Or as long as we can run them. Like you said, the cameras we had previously, some of them are as old as six, seven years. And the other ones die because the battery is built in there. This one with having a swappable battery. Hopefully we could get a longer life out of it.
Yeah, and our intention is not to replace them after the three years. We just had to come up with a proposal and and warranty information. That's just what we kind of picked, starting with their base warranty. And then financing it so that we now, at the end of those three years, we weren't still paying for them and having to pay for any repairs that may come up. So this was.
That still comes up with to, if you just keep them for the three years, that's a little over four hundred dollars a year to equip an officer with a camera. Over, you know what I mean? And. I know it's expensive, but I think the cameras are warranted. I know I wishy washy on the budget sometimes, but I I look, I realize it's an expense, but. I'm okay paying four hundred bucks a year to equip an officer for a camera as long as I don't get a speeding ticket.
I don't, I don't like the idea of doing any kind of. Funding financing. I'd rather we, if we did do this, that we just finance it ourselves, period. Right. That would be my position.
Thank you, Alderman seven X. Alderman Nichols?
Yes, thank you. I was, could you break it down? How many cameras, how many docking stations?
Most certainly.
And the hardware so that we have a better idea of what makes up that fifty thousand dollars?
Sure. So the vehicle equipment in that, I guess, first ten thousand includes an external antenna. An individual docking station in the car to link the camera to that squad video system. And then the installation, we're going to have to have that equipment professionally installed. So that it works properly, just like our squad video systems. So that that comes out to. Be about.
Five thousand one hundred and sixty dollars.
Yeah. So it's about, it's just over a thousand dollars a car to get all of that stuff purchased and put in. As far as the cameras, then, the cameras are eight hundred and seventy five dollars a piece. The mounts, depending on the specific mount, are anywhere from thirty to fifty dollars each. And then the docking station is just over fifteen hundred, fifteen hundred dollars a piece. And we only need four of those because each docking station in the station or in our building can hold eight cameras.
Can't we just hire a? Can't we just hire a camera crew to follow you guys around?
No. Does the, um, does the fifty thousand dollars also include the, the licensing?
Yes. So currently, with, with the licensing package uh for the three years, uh, it was just over sixty-five hundred dollars for all, for the three years.
Okay. So that's the licensing fee, a lot of cameras, a lot of hardware, and the installation. Uh, and the docking stations all included in that fifty thousand dollars.
Correct. That, that fifty thousand dollars should get those cameras deployed.
Thank you.
Alderman Langdon?
Thank you. Uh, LT Matt, easy question. Um, code enforcement does not wear one?
He does not, no.
Um, doesn't, okay, thank you.
Alderman Repol?
Oh, thank you. Um, uh, question was, uh, 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 Alderman Langdon got me off topic here. Um. Come back to me. I'm okay. Thank you.
Okay. I don't see any other lights on it, so if you think of it later, certainly we can always come back to it.
Oh, sorry, Tim.
You got it? All right, good.
Yeah, I got it. Um, when you were going over your budget earlier, you seem to have lots of uh lots of money that we are, have kind of saved uh this year, correct?
We believe that we will have a surplus, yes.
Okay, um, and that fifty thousand dollars would not really affect us this year as far as, because we've got a surplus, surplus built up. Um, we can't guarantee of that surplus every year, though. Um. So do we have any um thoughts of how we're going to fund these cameras in the next six to ten years as far as uh not ra, not really raising your budget, but uh having uh, you maybe cut some different things in different areas to make up for this fifty thousand?
Yep. So, um, taking Alderman Sevenix's advice, if we would not finance it, what our proposal would be is we already have ten thousand dollars saved up this year because we were anticipating going to, so now we need forty. We have ten thousand dollars in the budget as presented because that's what we've been paying basically for cameras every year um, for the last, gosh, how long? So now we're down to thirty thousand. That remaining thirty thousand, what we said is we could take it out of that vehicle slush fund because we know that we're not going to need that money for the next couple of years. As a result, if we did that, that's paid off, and now we don't have to pay that ten thousand dollars for cameras anymore for the next couple of years. So instead of putting that ten thousand dollars in the IT budget, we would just increase the uh vehicle budget by the ten thousand to replenish that ten grand for the next three years to make up that thirty thousand dollars. So that would, that would be one of the proposals that would basically do nothing different, no additional uh expenditure that would be for now or for the next couple of years until we replenish that money back. What, what you might be also referring to is could you take some of the surplus for this year? And I guess that is a Mayor Jennifer question because I'm not sure how that would work. It's generally with a carryover or funds like that, well, it probably has to be a council approval because you're changing the budget for this year. Alderman, something I'm sure, like, he might be
Yeah, we can do it through resolution.
So there would be a way to do that if that would be the council's wishes. And the mayor knows.
Thank you.
You bet. Mayor Marcus?
Utter or Pelot typically, we would do that in March. So we would look at any residual funds that were available in any department. And then we would either carry those funds over or those funds would go back to the general fund and build up our surpluses.
Okay, thank you. I, I like the idea of the cameras. I think they're needed. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Moving along, uh, just to kind of finish up things before we get into the wellness. Um, thirty-four oh three is still in the same portion of the budget we were talking about before. Uh, slight increase on that one. That's going to be to make up some of the training that we did this year. The other thing that we have to get out of the archaic process of, uh, it's been something that's been brought up by the union and HR um also says no more is when we send officers to training, right now we would bunk them, um, multiple people in a room. And as you can tell, that was probably something very low acceptable twenty years ago. But even, and obviously it would be same-sex or same-gender people, uh, it's just not a good practice in this day and age to do that anymore. So for the out-of-town training where we do have to get a hotel room, we'd be doubling some of those costs now, so that, that's what the training increases for. Uh, Matt's talked about the vehicles a little bit, and we're with both fuel prices as well as the hybrid vehicle going out next year. We did decrease the fuel for next year. Uh, we talked a little bit about the eighty-three one, so we have ninety-one in the budget. That's what we've been trying to budget for most years. Last year, we, we took a little bit out of that one because the, the surplus was built up in a pretty decent amount. But getting back to that ninety-one now to uh continue going forward. Uh, Matt, if you just want to hit real quick, you have three cars planned for next year?
Yeah, so next year, uh, plan, we have one patrol vehicle, uh, that would, is scheduled. Uh, the community service officer's vehicle would be scheduled to be replaced. And then one of the unmarked vehicles uh would be scheduled to be replaced. Uh, the nice thing about this and the support we've received from you as the common council who have allowed us to kind of budget this level amount every year, as you can see, next year, our actual expenditure is going to be over a hundred thousand dollars uh for all three vehicles. Uh, but we only have budgeted ninety-one. Uh, being able to carry those funds over uh has been a great help, and it also helps us propose a, a, a regular budget for you or to you for the vehicles. Uh, we want to avoid, you know, the scenario we were in about seven years ago where uh, the maintenance shop told us that we had some of our unmarked vehicles that were no longer safe to take out of the city that, for officers to drive to training. Now, we're kind of reaching that, uh, the low end of that curve now where some of our unmarked vehicles are reaching that, you know, six to seven-year-old range. And uh, starting next year, we'll, we'll hopefully begin to replace those and uh keep our fleet in tip-top shape.
So, and by the support, being able to do, have that good replacement schedule and looking ahead, uh, big thumbs up and a pat on the back to Lieutenant Albrecht, who, who deals with our cars. We're actually supposed to originally in our plan have four for next year. But based upon keeping them up to date and as well as a thumbs up and a pat on the back to City Garage for the maintenance that they do, and they, they really help us out on it. Uh, we're, we're able to extend the life and it's cheaper for, for the city and it's, it's a good thing. So we're able to only have to do three cars for next year compared to the other ones. Um, I'm going to go a little bit out of order here. K-9 program, that was discussed a little bit by uh Mr. Bill Taylor. Uh, just to kind of clarify a few things. So the four thousand dollars is actually something we've been doing the last couple of years. But we didn't have a specific line item designated for it, and it got kind of muddled into things. So we had uh the, the bikes that Lieutenant Spiegel had spoken about. Some of that was uh budgeted money and some of that was uh donations and fundraising things that we did to that to get those bikes. So what um I asked uh Jennifer to do is just break that out into its own line. So we would see that individually now. Uh, but there was the question or the comment made about fundraising for the, for the dog. Yep, that, that's completely what we do. Uh, as we're going through other things, I ended up looking back since two thousand twelve, we've actually received sixty-two thousand two hundred and forty-eight dollars in donations. You will see nowhere else in this budget is there anything for vet bills, the training expenses, uh, dog food, you know, things along that line. So that the program does truly self-fund itself. The only thing, and this is something that uh, some of the former aldermen had raised when we were transitioning with one of the dogs, is they said, hey, when you're to that point of needing a dog, we don't want you to have to go around and pass around the hat for that, that account, for, for that cost. This isn't costing the city anything for the operational thing, so why don't we set up a fund? So when you get to that point where you have to replace the dog, that you have, that you're able to do it right off the bat without having to uh pass the header on. So that's, that's kind of what the history of that has been. Then a new item uh that we do have in for this year is the wellness program. Uh, again, it's still in that, that same portion of the budget. I think it's just on the next page of forty-eight. Uh, this is an eight thousand dollar request for next year, and for this one, I'll be turning it over to Deputy Chief Handcheck and Lieutenant Scholz. Uh, just one, I guess, forward to it is, this actually stems from when Deputy Chief Handcheck went to the Command College. She had to do a project, and this was kind of the end result of her project, similar to Lieutenant Thorne ended up doing uh uh the thing on the property evidence custodial person, and we shifted some things around to do that. Alderman Grand, did you have a question before we jump into this?
Yes, before you do, thank you. You, you talked about you broke out that K-9 program with spending. I'm just wondering if this is something we should break out for this camera. Also have a separate account maybe going forward, so we can track that, so we don't have to take money from here for there, so we can set up some type of budget tracking on the cameras.
Yeah, good idea. I can uh, we can certainly work with Jennifer on that to see how, what would that look like, sure. So with that, uh, Deputy Chief Handcheck?
Yes, um, thank you, Tim. Just like Tim mentioned, uh, this was a result of Command School. Uh, we identified a need within our department. I completed a research project. So tonight, Lieutenant Scholz and I will condense that project, hopefully quickly, to give you an overview of why we have identified the need here at our department for all employees. Uh, the three areas that we have identified are physical health, mental health, and financial health. We train our officers, uh, actually all of our staff, how to deal with complaints, uh, tactics, firearms, everything. How can we do our job better? And we do it very well. But what we don't do, and we never have really for the most part, gave them the tools or the resources on how to cope with what they're dealing with every day. They respond to devastating calls for service, disturbing calls. Um, just extreme critical incidents have been on the rise. We give them every other tool and resource to do their job, but mentally and physically, we have not. And this is our goal for twenty-twenty-one, to do that.
So some of the benefits, um, some of the facts that we put up here, a lot of it is derived from um, uh, breakout session I went to at the International Chiefs Conference that uh Texas Department of Public Safety put out. And uh, one of the main things is that they saw a reduction in costs to the city, which included the light duty, work comp, health insurance of nine and a half percent. When officers were deemed fit, um, and in the same study, it showed that obese officers took about four times longer to return to work than fit officers, so that's an additional cost to the city as well. Um, and then in another study from two thousand three to two thousand eleven, it showed that body motion injuries are the second leading cause to officers for their injuries. Um, obviously, any injuries um are bad, but the body motion is the second leading cause, which could be prevented um from developing a good program. Um, and on the bottom there, you'll see that, obviously, these things reduce doctor visits, healthcare, and um kind of costs all around the city.
When I started the project, um, a few members of the command staff identified this need. Um, I sent out a survey to every single member of the police department, uh, all the way down to our CSOs, asking them their interest, what categories, what do they want, what do they need? And I was blown away by the response that I received of people just completing the survey, but that for our entire department, seventy-five percent of staff are interested in a wellness program. We want to be well. We want to do more. We want to be um educated on other things to do to be safe and healthy. So physical and mental health are the top two categories, uh, mainly. Numerous suggestions were given by all members of the police department. And this isn't something that they just want done once a year, at least quarterly. But many people also said they wanted it delivered monthly. Um, knowing that uh things take time, we'll have a team that will put together a plan on an annual basis. And it can change, but we are going to start uh hopefully with quarterly.
Angie, I got a question or I want to comment. Um, sir, this is going to be a great program. I'm really glad to see that seventy-five percent. Um, years back, I did a ride along uh with Roger and uh all-day uh, uh Officer Roger. And um, while we were in the car sitting, uh, uh, I asked him if we could do uh speed checks. So while we were there sitting, I asked him, Roger, what do you like about your job? And he hesitated. He says, what I like is, well, my job is right now is you sitting here next to me. I'm going, really? I didn't quite get it. But he mentioned then, after that shortly, he says there was nothing he liked about his job. I go, why? He goes, because all day long, I am dealing with bad people. I don't deal with people like you, Mark. And um, wow, that uh really hit a spot in me. So this wellness program that you uh, uh developed and gonna uh implement, I think is going to be huge for all your officers.
Well, thank you. We certainly look for your support. We know you supported us when, two years ago, with the physical fitness incentive, and that has grown in the last two years. And this is now taking it and exploding it to other areas, not just physical health, but mental health. And it's true, we do deal with a lot of negativity. We see things that we don't want our parents to ever see, and, and nobody should. But uh, we do it and we do it well. But now, as a department and as a command staff, we want to give back. We want to give everyone the tools to start dealing and coping and handling the stress better because it's only, it's only rising. And if we don't do something now, you'll see in future slides, um, we never want to get to that point and say, why didn't we start today? Um, and never be too late, so.
And one of the things we have to consider, if something is ignored, kind of to um branch off from what Angie said, is that you have these job performance decreases, your decision-making abilities are impaired, and then um obviously, like we talked about from the last slide, you're going to have agency costs increase as well as increased costs to the city. The, the health risks that, that are kind of contributed to overall wellness and health of officers is sleep disorders, uh, hypertension, and heart disease, which obviously lead to many major health concerns that can be fatal, and we'll talk about those a little bit more here in the next uh couple of slides. So the average life expectancy of a um officer, when the study was completed, is, is fifty-seven years old. Um, and to put that perspective, they live about uh twenty-one point nine, so about twenty-two years less than a civilian um that's not in a um, uh, police officer role. And then if you look at between the ages of fifty-five to fifty-nine, uh, which is uh about the retirement age for law enforcement officer, the chances of, of a civilian dying of a heart attack is one point five percent. And then when you compare that to a police officer, it's about fifty-six percent. And um, about fifty percent of police officers will die from heart disease within five years of retirement, which is about that age um that you see above.
So we're not trying to bore you with numbers. It is alarming, especially for some of those who are nearing retirement. This is depressing. Um, because they've put in many years of service to the city, and now we're looking at the stats and going, ooh, how many years do I have left? That's why we want to start now. We want to start with our staff who is somewhat younger and hope they live to be ninety-five years old because we're teaching them and giving them the resources to be physically healthy. And that's, and you'll see many different facets that we'll do. This isn't just about go out and exercise and take care of yourself. It's the why behind it. Of all the stress that our body endures and all the cortisol that is built up, we need to show them why it's important and how to do it, not just get on the treadmill and run, but there are so many other things, and we'll get to that. But this is the alarming number here, that if we don't start taking care of um, everyone here at the police department is officer suicides. And this is something that we don't want to talk about. But just this last year, and the numbers for twenty-twenty are alarming as well, and I did want to put them up. But two hundred and twenty-eight officer suicides last year compared to only a hundred and forty-six line of duty deaths. If that doesn't make, you know, uh, you have goosebumps, I don't know what will. So this is truly one slide that we need to do more. Um, no officer should get to that point where that's their last resort. After serving their community, we want to be there for them. So that, these are the three areas, again, we want to focus on, and we'll just touch uh really quickly on what we want to do with all three of them.
Angie, one question, please.
Yes.
Uh, those numbers that you were giving us, my dad was a police officer, and my grandpa was a police officer. Uh, grandpa lived to ninety-five, my dad lived to seventy-five. Um, all through the city of Manassas. Question is, is those numbers that you were putting up, are those from the state of Wisconsin? Are those like national averages? Or where did you get those numbers from?
Both. Um.
Yeah, a lot of those numbers are um nonprofit groups and other uh groups as well as um the um, like Heart Association and different medical groups, they compile a lot of the numbers, so some are coming from different places. But it's a nationwide um average um for all law enforcement officers in the United States.
Okay, because I mean, I'm, I'm thinking, obviously, it's a, uh, if you're an officer in Chicago versus an officer in Nina or Manassas or Kimberly, I, it might be a little less of a, little less of a, the numbers might be a little less of a, little less of a, the numbers might be less. Um, if we were over in, in this area versus Chicago or Detroit or something like that. So, uh, I can see where the numbers are skewed a little bit for the larger cities. I can see where, uh, fifty-seven, sixty years old within five years, they, they do pass away. There's lots of suicides. Um, that's why I was just wondering if there was a, any way that you could have those same type of numbers for Wisconsin or just even north, uh, northeast Wisconsin, uh, area, cuz that would be more specific to us. Thank you.
So to chime in real quick, um, you would see the same numbers in the state of Wisconsin are very similar. And in fact, there's some studies that show that actually it's more difficult in a municipality like ours. Uh, and most Wisconsin ones, because when you are in the larger cities, you are at high level all the time. You're dealing with everyone who hasn't gone. You're dealing with just the, the real high level amount of crime. We're asking our officers to cross old ladies across the street type of thing, you know, do a vehicle lockout. And you go from that call to the call earlier today of the woman who's stabbing herself with a knife. That makes the cortisol just fly through the person's body, and you're on a constant roller coaster. Where in some of the other jurisdictions that are larger and they have a higher call volume, you, you actually see uh, a different coping mechanisms with officers. So great question. Um, I, I can tell you, any one of us that's on the call, I could name the ten people right now that I know did not make it past five years after retirement. And it's actually a sarcastic dark humor running joke with cops that we say, yeah, all right, you'll be dead within five years of retiring, cuz unfortunately it happens. It happens way too often, and we all know someone that has, unfortunately. Sorry.
Uh, thank you, Tim, for those numbers. I, I, you know, uh, I've lived here a long time, so I know like Mike Brun and anybody who's older than Mike Brun. Um, those, uh, those numbers necessarily don't reflect those guys that were Ronnie Whitman's over eighty years old right now, and he was one of the last police officers that's whatever at that age.
Uh, totally agree. Uh, the job has changed substantially in the last fifteen to twenty years. Um, and I can tell you, there's an Appleton officer who retired who just killed himself within the last month.
I know Mike, uh, I know who it is, yes.
But you, you don't, it, it's not the thing that shows up on the post-pressing. I'm certainly, I, I agree, and I'm so glad that your father and grandfather made it as long as they did. Uh, we just know that the number's here, and that's why we're saying, gosh, we want to make sure we turn it around.
Well, I'm not disagreeing with your health and all that stuff. I think it's great, but I was questioning some of the numbers, but I, I, I agree, they need to be. Uh, there's lots of, uh, uh, situations the officers need, uh, lots of help with the mental and the physical health, so I agree.
I appreciate it. Thank you. Go ahead.
All right, um, we're gonna, just gonna touch on the three categories that we're going to hopefully focus on real quick with physical health. Again, not just about, let's all just go work out together. It's about the how we're going to do it, the why are we going to do it? So we need, uh, some more equipment that we'll be able to set up plans. We have some very talented, educated, and passionate people. One of them is sitting right next to me about physical health. He would, it can and set up plans for probably everyone here with a number other people at our agency. So without the equipment, we can't follow through. Um, everyone starting at our front desk through our officers, they're sitting, exploding out of the squad car, doing all kinds of things. To teach them stretching and improving their flexibility is huge. Everyone has back pains and different things. Well, if we can show them the right measures to take, it's only going to be a positive thing. Nutrition is a big thing, meal planning, uh, shift work, long hours. Uh, we have some staffing issues right now, so people are working long days. They don't have time to run to the grocery store. Can we teach them to meal prep? Some of this sounds simple, but when you look at our roster, we have so many young people. Again, let's start now before it's too late. Uh, learning everything about hydration, the importance, let's not have Five Mountain News a day, even though we need the caffeine, but water is our friend and the reason why, so.
And then when you look at mental health, uh, the things that we want to focus on is resilient, resiliency training, um, annual visits with mental health professionals. And then present, presentations on trauma, and it's something that we've kind of started with our last in-service already, um, getting officers, um, kind of exposed, um, in a very general sense to this mental health, um, and kind of opening up and, and giving these resources, um, uh, conveniently to officers. Uh, the other thing that is not looked upon, is not focused on, um, and again with our, with our young staff, something that we should be focusing on cuz it can lead to stress, um, as you get older and, um, get further in careers, financial health. So helping newer officers, even older officers, creating a budget, looking into retirements, investments, um, the deferred comp programs and, and loans, and how to properly budget your money. So kind of to wrap everything up with final thoughts here, uh, i- if you look at our staff, approximately forty-seven, uh, percent of the department is in their twenties with another twenty percent in their thirties. And then obviously the rest of the percentage is forty and up. Um, so being able to make a difference now while we have a young department on the physical, mental, and financial health, and not only have major advantages to the officers themselves as well as their families, but to the department and city as a whole.
Before.
Yep, I hear you.
Yep, I was, I was just gonna say, th- that was a very nice presentation. I think they're trying to scare you, uh, please chief, strike us so that you, they keep you around a little bit longer. They love you.
No, I appreciate, uh, W G Fan Check and officials for the information that you presented and, and the paper that you did on it. I know Angie's very, very passionate about this. She, one of the, the goals that we've had is just to show the folks that work here that we really love them and care about them, and we want them to be, uh, successful, not only here, but in their personal lives. The two are very much inter- intertwined. Uh, so if you go to page two seventy-nine, under four seventy, that account number there, that is the three hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars that was earmarked for, uh, two projects with Public Safety Building. Um, one, and the majority cost of that is the roof. The roof is something that's been kicked down the, the road several times. Uh, we average, eh, probably what, guys, one to two roof leaks per year? Or we have to run around, we never really know where it's gonna happen, um, but we have to carry buckets around to try to hold the water out. Um, I was gonna go up there and take some pictures of the roof, but, uh, we're not supposed to go up on the roof any longer because you have to step in certain spots, and if you don't, you could basically put your foot through it. Uh, it's, if, if you talk to the building folks, they'll, they'll tell you that it's well overdue. When we did have the addition put onto the building, uh, we actually had to pay some additional amount cuz they had no, um, salvageable material to attach the roof of the old portion of the building, the new portion of the building. So again, this is something that, different priorities, we certainly understand, came about, but it's, uh, Adam will tell you, and Brian will tell you, it's, it's well overdue. The other thing that I'm showing you some pictures of, uh, it really doesn't do justice. I know Alderman Langdon came over for a little tour of it. And, uh, I don't know if I can repeat two of the words he probably used to describe it. But the, uh, the locker, the shower and the bathroom in the men's locker room, um, is, is original. Uh, which you can see is those are the, those, um, small mosaic tiles. And we even brought in Gunner, or, um, Service Master to do a steam clean to those, but there's no way to get out some of the mold that exists in, in between some of the tiles. Plus, this is what's referred to as a gang shower, so if you notice, uh, three people could be showering at the same time. Um, the way that this is laid out, there's really nothing that separates them from people using the rest of the facility. So, um, literally a person standing at a urinal, which is just off to the right of that curtain, what could be going to the bathroom while you have someone literally standing just on the other side of that, that curtain, um, where there's pictures. So that's kind of looking out of the shower back uh, to the urinals and the entrance to the bathroom itself. And then we still have the, uh, good old late seventies, early eighties retro doors with a nice orange and, and yellow paint scheme. Um, so this is the other project that was earmarked in the budget to get this ADA compliant as well as get rid of the gang shower.
That's coming back, chief.
Is it? You think, see what we can get for the stalls, right? But Alderman Langdon?
Thank you. Um, so, um, Angie, I was there one day and Angie took me on a tour, um, of some things, uh, the bathrooms and other places. And you're right, these pictures, uh, really do not do justice. Um, that locker room for those guys is extremely small. Um, the aisle is like four feet wide, and these officers today compared back to then, they're get, they're, they're bigger, they're wider, they're stronger. And, um, and, and that makes the locker room, uh, itself and, 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 um, the wash area, the sinks, um, are extremely small and outdated. So, uh, I took a tour of this and, um, I, I really fully back, uh, the, uh, remodeling of this. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Langdon. Appreciate you coming over to take a tour. If anyone else wants it, the number of us would be happy to show you what we got. Uh, Cresson Guard, that is now back to page forty-nine and fifty. Currently all our positions are filled. Uh, before Angie got out of that, she found a couple of the great ones, and now Officer Gresham is gonna help, uh, coordinate that program going forward. There's no changes for twenty twenty-one there. Uh, CSO twenty twenty-one, we basically did increase that slightly to go from ten hours a day to twelve hours per day. And that is on pages fifty-one and fifty-two. Uh, the only thing we might need to look at, we didn't do any sort of pay increase, but currently the wages are eleven fifty an hour. And that's what some of the fast food restaurants and some other things are paying right now. Um, to try to attract folks to come in like our officer applications, our CSO positions are, we're not getting a whole lot of applicants with it sometimes, so we're, we're kind of scraping to get folks into those spots, so maybe a pay increase in the future, um, might be something we'll look at, but nothing for next year. Uh, Police Auxiliary Unit, that's on fifty-three and fifty-four. Um, again, hats off to Officer Abrahamson. He's the one who coordinates the program. It's really hard to motivate a bunch of folks to come in and do training and other things when you don't have any events to, to, to be planned for. Alderman Paul?
Uh, yeah, Tim, thank you. Um, who are typically your CSO, uh, candidates? Are those, uh, the kids at the tech taking the police, uh, science classes, or who are they?
Yeah, great question. Uh, that's generally who we try to attract, whether they're at the tech or even like UW Oshkosh or up at UW GB, uh, college students. And we have had some great success, or maybe limited success. Did he hang up? Lieutenant Albert was one of our CSO. Oh, there he is. He's underneath me now, so someone else moved around. So whether good or bad, he started off as a CSO with us. No, really good, and he was a great find, and he worked his way up from that position to being an officer. And all the time. Okay, and then, uh, so we did auxiliary unit, and then last, the jail and animal shelter. Uh, that, so the jail one is just the next page over, so I think we're on fifty-three now, no, fifty, fifty-five. Uh, we're gonna decrease that one three thousand. You know, this is one of those that's been a moving target with COVID, and we don't think that's gonna change. Um, the judge has been pretty creative on some of the things. We're writing less tickets in the first part of the year just cuz we had less traffic, which results in less warrants. Um, but anyhow, we're, we're comfortable with three thousand dollars being decreased out of that one to make the numbers we wanted to for this year. And then the animals that actually, it's in the police department budget, but it's not in our numbers. That's actually found in the health department's budget, so that's page one fifty-two and one fifty-three. Uh, we're looking at decreasing that another thousand dollars. So our last five years, based upon what we've changed on it, we've actually decreased ten thousand dollars over five years for animal stuff, so I appreciate your support in the changes that we ended up doing with that. Uh, finally, the last question that was raised was community or with, uh, the code enforcement, uh, with Joe. Yes, well, Joe certainly still works here. Uh, he, his information's on the community development, so I'm sure Sam will cover him later. Uh, the one other comment that was made, Apollo, can we free him up with some of his time and things? Great question, and actually kind of funny that you brought that up cuz it was either this week or late last week. Sam and I were just talking about some, some of the things that Joe works on, like abandoned vehicles, and was wondering if the CSOs could do more work on abandoned vehicles versus Joe having to spend the time with it. Um, so certainly that's a dialogue that Sam and I have to try to make best use of Joe's time going forward. Sometimes things that he's at cross the lines of an abandoned vehicle and a house issue, and a this issue, and a that issue. So it might make sense to have Joe on that, but, uh, great, great question, and certainly something we're continuing to, to look at and work. Okay, whole bunch of stuff, great questions that you folks had. Uh, again, I, I can't say enough how much I appreciate your support. It's, it's been a, an interesting year, and, uh, certainly hoping better for twenty twenty-one across the board, but just really proud to work with the great people that we have here and, uh, the support that you've given us to have these great people here. We do things differently, and, uh, I'm truly proud of, as, as a department of what we've been accomplished. Alderman Paul?
Yeah, yeah, thank you. Tim, um, Angie was talking about that physical, the mental and, uh, uh, mental health and financial, all of those things. What is her? Um, what is her, uh, big plan? Is that, is there to be like a workout room in the police station? Or what, what is she, uh, uh, planning for?
I'll let her jump in.
That's a very good question. So with this research project, um, I had pre- created a conceptual program that encompasses numerous different things throughout the year for all three categories. So improving our workout room, using our workout rooms here to teach staff how to use the equipment, special plans for people who are of different ages, different interests, what they're looking for. Um, and then taking exercise to the next level, um, teaching, stretching, flexibility, yoga, meditation, um, meal prepping, te- having people come in here and teach us how to cook healthy meals. Or when you are working a sixteen-hour shift, when you go to, and you have to eat at a gas station cuz now it's three o'clock in the morning, what is the best thing to eat? So it kind of encompasses a little bit of everything, and the team of people who will be setting up the plans, it's going to be a little bit of everything on every single year. And we'll keep rotating topics so that we continue to address all of our staff every single year as we continue to change.
Okay, thank you ver- uh, how much? Um, obviously this is going to cost some money at some point. Um, have you come up with some type of, uh, money? Financial number that you would think that would, you would need for this type of program?
So initially, we have eight thousand in the budget this year. We're looking to do that, uh, same number for the next couple of years in hopes that will get us a good foundation. Moving forward, it will be less because, uh, some of the larger expenses to get this program up and running will be done in the first three to four years at most. And then after that, um, again, with some of our staff here who are very educated and passionate with wellness, they can be some of our instructors. I've already reached out and have numerous, uh, contacts with other people in the community that are willing to come here for free and do most of the instructions. So moving forward, there'll be an expense with programs and, um, resources. But the cost for the program initially will be higher, and it'll continue to fade off.
Angie, thank you very much, and welcome Alderman Taylor. Nice to see you in the house.
Alderman Grady?
Uh, thank you, Police Chief. My question, I serve on the park and rec board, and I know Nick, I'll probably butcher your last name, but Oldak. When we're looking at some type of security, especially Hard Park, that's become a thorn, and it's become a vandalized area. And I know the new director, Megan Saget, and we talked about security and some type of camera system. And we mentioned that it shouldn't just come from the park and rec, it should come from also the police. And I don't know if that was relayed to you at all, but we'd like to see some monies budgeted for this type of, uh, public park safety or whatever. I just hope it's on your radar, and maybe if some of this extra money is around for next year, that somehow we can look at the, the situation, but I don't know if you can speak at all about Hard Park and, and the problems that we're having there, but I don't wanna elaborate too much on it, but I just need, know that there should be some money set aside for some type of security at these parks.
Yep, so, uh, did hear about the conversations. Certainly Hard Park has been an issue for, I don't know, Alderman, seven, how many years? Or it's, I didn't float out there, and, uh, you know, he was very involved in, in creating some of the solutions a number of years ago, but we had a flare-up recently. Um, I have not spoken with Megan directly about it as she kind of has taken over the reins of, of this year's budget specifically. But generally speaking, and things like that, it would come out of the department budget where it's happening. Just like if it was a, you know, um, public works facility, it wouldn't be budgeted. If they have a fence or a key card system or a camera out there, it generally is, is maintained there. No different, where it's kind of looked at is, is each a different entity. Um, the sewage commission, for example, has a camera that goes along the, the, the trail that goes along the property. They maintain that, and it's, it's theirs. Um, we certainly can partner and will partner with them, and I guess, uh, to tap on that a little bit, I don't know, Lieutenant Thor, did you wanna jump in on any of that because he was actually involved with, uh, some of the work that we had here. was actually involved with uh some of the work with that we had here uh about the camera stuff. Did you have anything you wanted to throw in?
We did, excuse me. We did look a little bit into that, uh, some some cameras. There's some different manufacturers out there um uh that that may provide us some options. Additionally, we were also looking at increasing signage um and some other alternatives as well.
Thanks, Nick. So, long story long, yes, we will certainly continue to partner with them. And whether it ends up, I mean, it's, at the end of the day, this is where I don't get too upset about it's my money versus their money, it's your money. And if this is something that uh we certainly want to move forward with, however we end up funding it, uh, is something that that we can work with. Mayor Marcus, did you have something? Oh, I'm sorry.
Just so you know, there, there is some money in the parks budget for that camera system, and she was working with Nicole Zach on that as well.
Perfect. There you go. Other questions, Alderman Taylor?
Yeah, I was on my, I was listening on my phone, and I couldn't respond. Uh, but we finally got the computer up and running. So uh, I just gotta back up on some of the questions I was writing down along the way. Uh, on the body camera, uh, can the school system uh pay for those officers for the cameras that they have to have in the school system?
Um, I'd have to look at the exact agreement that we have with them. However, I believe the the most recent version that we have is that school-specific equipment, such as the computers they use, their uh training that they'd be required to do as part of an SRO, is the school sticker, and then things that are required for being a police officer falls onto our share. Um, so I I'm thinking offhand, it's probably one that we would have to cover based upon that agreement, but certainly something we can look into.
Okay. And uh, every time an officer engages with somebody, does it uh, is the camera running?
So um, hate to say every time, because we do, you certainly have some exemptions in our policy, but uh, in essence, yes, mo-most times. I don't know, Matt, if you want to jump in on it. Uh, yeah, they're supposed to be, because you, even if it's a traffic stop or whatever, just because you don't know what might escalate. So they should be on.
I I I I like cameras, and uh, is there any, is there any federal mandate or state mandate that we have to have cameras?
There's, yeah, no state or federal mandate at this time. Uh, it could be something that they they sit down in the future.
Okay. And uh, got a question for Nick. Uh, how many miles are we putting on our our squads out there at this time before we turn them in?
Uh, our our patrol vehicles, uh, by the time they reach their end of their life cycle, they're right around a hundred thousand. Uh, some of them have uh, you know, been put into other uses uh to make it up to that hundred thousand. Uh, with police vehicles, uh, there is, I guess, some research that has been done, that if you want to compare that to a civilian vehicle, uh, every uh one mile on a police patrol vehicle equates to about three miles on a civilian vehicle. So the condition of the vehicle, the suspension, uh, some of the major parts and components of that are are extremely worn and and show a much more uh, show many more signs of wear at that hundred thousand miles compared to a civilian vehicle.
Okay, I'm glad to hear that. Uh, I know some years back, we're around seventy thousand miles, so I'm glad uh we increased that somewhat. Uh, I don't know who this question is for, but uh uh as far as uh debriefing, uh, do we have any type of debriefing for, let's say, officers or or clerks or anything like that at the end of the day? Or how do we, how do we handle any type of debriefing?
At the uh, at the end, well, I guess there's a couple of processes. On a day and DL basis, no. Um, there there isn't anything current with it. If there is a, let's say, mid-level incident that you think might have affected someone, or you you can kind of tell sometimes when something might impact someone, then that can be an informal debriefing that the supervisor or another officer may do, or one of the other, the, you know, officers that are trained in the peer support, they might recognize that something is going on. If it ends up being a major incident, uh, you know, like incident from Taco Street or something along that lines, then there is something called the critical incident stress debriefing, and we then bring it outside folks that are officers, then go to one of those uh sessions to talk about what what transpired and try to help them work through it. Ange, do you have anything you want to add on that?
Uh, oh, I thought you asked somebody else a question. Okay, that does answer my question. But uh, you know, like, like your clerks, uh, I I appreciate Nick sending us uh uh all the calls that you guys get, and and especially your clerks have to process all that mentally. And I see there's, you know, uh, a lot of suicide attempts and things like that. And it seems like when you might be processing that all mentally, uh, uh, there could be a problem with that, too. And I'd look, that's the case. But, you know, officers go out, they might get this call or that call, but it seems like your clerks uh uh get all the calls. So I was wondering, do we, do we ever, do we, do we help them out in any way?
Yep, they are um basically involved. So even when we've had the critical incidences that that they were working and were out there, they've been involved in those debriefings. Um, we've also reached out to them, you know, in the one case that we had with the uh teacher that was sexually assaulting people at one of the schools, students. Um, some of the graphic stuff was, or that case that Nick brought up about all those images, um, while they don't see the images, they they get some pretty graphic descriptions. We understand that that can impact them. So they are certainly included, because it's a, it's a different type of trauma that they're then going through, having to literally type this stuff word for word, and it's uh, it can cause some issues as well. So then they're a part of this whole thing.
Okay, good. Glad to hear that. Uh, I've always, I always like cameras. Uh, Nina has quite a system over there in their park systems, and we all know our parks, uh, were vandalized this summer, and uh the more we can uh get some other eyes out there, if you will, in the community, the better. And uh, uh, I think Third and Racine needs a camera. There's so many knockdowns here as far as accidents, but our, with our stop and go lights and power poles and things. So uh, I I definitely embrace the camera issue in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Taylor.
Chief, speaking of cameras, um, you know, my issue with the cameras, and I've visited the police commission and all that. So you're saying that's gonna be brought up later on in Public Works?
Public Works has the information on it. Uh, the camera system that they were looking at would have been able to do in Third and Racine, I think it was about fifteen thousand.
Okay, all right. I'll wait till we get there, then.
Yep.
Anything else for the chief or the other officers that are here this evening? Well, thank you all for participating. We appreciate the information. And why don't we take a five-minute break, and then we'll come back for community development at that point. Ted, did you have something? No? Okay.
Thank you all. We appreciate, uh, again, your time and support. And thanks to my folks. Appreciate your command staff for for hanging out here and playing the Brady Bunch game here and throwing your insights today. Thanks.
Sandra, are you still on there? Sandra?
Hello, James, I'm here.
Uh, did you get your paper?
Oh, Mike, oh, yeah, I guess we did. I just brought it in. Thank you.
James? Can you hear me, James?
Uh, yes.
I was sorry to hear about your mother.
Oh, thank you. Who's stalking right now?
Tom.
Oh, Tom, yeah. Oh, yeah. Yeah, she led a wonderful life, and uh, uh, it was time for, time for her. She uh, this last three months wasn't good, and uh...
That's what your brother said.
It was a blessing, and uh, she would have been ninety-three yesterday, so she missed her birthday by just a couple of days, so.
Oh.
Her, her birthday and my birthday always fall on uh major elections. So uh, it's uh, it was fun that this year it fell on her birthday.
Yeah, so Carol Hersinger would have been a hundred yesterday.
Well, that's right. That's right. Yeah. Yeah, she just missed hers, too.
Yep.
It was uh Carol cremated. Uh, I never saw the ground, you know, dug up around Bill's grave. Uh, I was just wondering, was she uh?
Yeah, she was cremated, but I don't think they'd interdurate, because they thought they'd come back and do that on her birthday. But they can't travel.
Okay. Because I know Bill was uh, he, he was buried in a coffin.
No, he was cremated.
Oh, was he really?
Yep.
Oh. Because she always talked about, or the preacher always talked at his funeral, the man in the box over there, that's why I thought he was cremated. I mean, I thought he was uh, okay.
He was there, but he was starting to smell. So they got him out right after the service, like cremated him.
Yeah, okay. Bill, I mean, the pastor say that uh, the man over in the box, because Bill said, all the funerals he went to, he always got, uh, they always say, oh, Bill this, Bill that. And and Bill said, I got sick of hearing the guy's name, so I just told him, I want to be the guy in the box. But that, that's Bill. He had that type of humor.
Right.
Yeah, I tell you, I know we all miss him. I know Stan and you and myself, we, he was uh...
He was a character.
Yeah, and those guys, there's only a couple of them, you know, that come around like that. So, yeah.
We're going on close to ten minutes for the three people that I don't see their picture yet, if they can hear us.
Yeah, Randy, you're supposed to keep track of that time.
You're right, it was, yeah, seven twenty-four.
Thank you, Randy. It was a nice break.
I just had to have time for some of my Mike's popcorn. Right, Stan?
How was your golf game, Randy?
Golf was great today. It would have gave me. It's two Friday, I'm going to High Cliff. Sunday, I'm going to uh Manitowoc, Branch River.
Okay.
It's beautiful weather. No reason to stay inside. You guys do know this is being recorded.
Yeah, that's fine.
That's okay.
So, back.
Yes, I'm here. I'm gonna turn my camera off for a little bit, but I'll be here.
Okay. We will turn that over to Director Schrader, then. Oops, Sam, I can see your mic is on, but I can't hear you.
Let's try this. Can you guys hear me okay?
Much better.
Yep. All right, awesome. Well, thanks, guys. Um, we'll uh, we'll certainly try to um make this uh um kind of go through uh community development's budget fairly quickly. Um, should have asked to go before PD, not only just because of the time, but how well uh Tim uh, Tim and his crew always present everything. So um, they do a great job, um, both presenting and and just day to day. So uh, again, just community development budget uh for twenty twenty-one. Um, up in the top right corner, we have kind of a, just a little bit of a breakdown of of, you know, who's in the department. Uh, myself as a director, Joe Stevenson, our planner, Kristy Hein, the community development coordinator, Allison Homsky, uh, she's our residential building inspector, as well as a housing specialist, uh, Joel Paulzine, the code enforcement specialist. Um, and we are contracted with Elver Highland or ALB inspections for commercial, electric and commercial um uh building inspections. So please feel free to interrupt me at any time when you guys uh see anything that you want me to uh touch base on. So uh, basically, uh, very quickly, um, some major accomplishments in twenty twenty, uh, we did implement the Strong Neighborhoods uh program. Um, so that, again, uh, was a a large program. Um, we uh budgeted three hundred thousand dollars this year, and the the funds for that program were created through the closure of TIF V. Uh, we actually uh implemented uh two subdivisions. These subdivisions were in the works since, I believe, twenty eleven, twenty twelve. So uh, nice to get those rolling. And then we have a couple more that uh that we're gonna touch on as well. Uh, Bertram Dental Lab, again, got that uh uh facility, uh, or the former grocery store at uh the Third Street Market, uh, backfilled with a dental lab. Um, and I think they're gonna be a great asset to to the community once they come into um to add employment and and things in that nature uh at that facility. So uh, the grid site, again, the execution of that development agreement, there's been a lot of uh work that's been going in, still a lot of work um as we move forward. Lake Shore Ridge Apartments and Condos uh on our far east side, owned by Lake Park Villas. Um, again, those, uh, we had to kind of do a TIF amendment and really to work closely there. But, you know, all in all, that uh, those apartments and condos... With addition to the hopeful Phase 2 was estimated at roughly $17 million of new evaluation. Early closure of TIF 6 this year, we did put, use the the state statute to put the last year's increment into the Strong Neighborhoods program, and that is kind of earmarked for that Appleton Water Plant property that we've previously discussed and will continue to discuss into 2021. This year, we had 17 new single-family homes. We have sold 10 residential lots and four, all four commercial lots that remain out at Lake Park Villas. We have executed a Bonta redevelopment agreement, so for the former or for the remaining portion of the Bonta building, and we have, again, executed contracts for commercial building and electrical inspections. From everything I'm hearing, the Elver Highland is doing very, very well in both communication and moving that forward. We are looking for, you know, some commercial plumbers still to take over there. So as we move into 2021, we're going to try, continue to look to market those available properties. There's still the province terrace properties, Lake Park Villas. There's one lot that the city owns out at Airport and Appleton Road. Simplify the Strong Neighborhoods Housing Program. So again, there's a lot of things going on there. There's a lot, a lot of staff time that goes into it. There are a lot of discussions that happen with the common council, so try and simplify that to reduce staff time and also, but move forward with what we're looking at to accomplish there.
Sam, Alderman Langdon? So you're going, you want to try to simplify. Will that be coming to the common council?
Yeah, some things, so some things are just administrative, how we kind of process on the backend. But we will be kind of looking at that a little bit closer and likely bringing something forward as we start to compile all the information. So again, over the next month or so, we do want to kind of give a little bit larger, as noted at common council on Monday, a little bit larger picture of what we did this year. And again, some of those impacts with assessments and evaluations aren't going to be able to take place until the following year, just because of how assessments work, but we certainly want to be involved with the common council on that and potentially look to have a workshop or something with the council.
So we have, we have a protocol in place right now. And in order to simplify, if that you want to do, we would have to change the protocol, correct?
Again, we, we're going to work very closely with the with the common council on this, and we're not going to do anything that, that we cannot do through our current process.
Okay, thank you.
So again, we're going to look to update the transportation and land use chapters of the comprehensive plan. This, our existing comprehensive plan was done in 2008. This should be updated every 10 years. So again, we are behind. We were going to do this in 2020, and we had the budget, we had the funds there. However, due to COVID, the comprehensive plan really does need to be a public input document. We really need to interact with the public to see, see what, what they would like and provide that, that input to the common council for final consideration. So again, we did not execute that in this calendar year because, because we want to make sure that we're not skipping any type of step there. We certainly could do it on a virtual platform, and maybe next year it's on both virtual and in person, but we want to make sure we can still touch on that. Work towards implementing further development around the Bonta property, support local businesses through this COVID pandemic. Certainly have done a lot of that through 2020, but there's still a lot to go. And any business that, you know, is, is currently still surviving today, even if COVID went away today, there's still a long road ahead in some potential financing that they have built up. So again, to continue to provide that support to our businesses. Next year is, is the census year where we would really start to break down populations of the city, as well as look to redistrict and things of that nature. So working very closely with the Health Department and the City Clerk's Office to get an accurate depiction of the city for the next 10 years. Advance the redevelopment of downtown Manassia. We do have the Downtown Vision Plan and the Water Street Corridor Plan. Those plans are still coming very, while, while it may not look from the common council side that, you know, things are actually really getting implemented. They're very useful tools from an economic development standpoint to say, here's where we want to go and here's a lot of the things that we've, we've discussed and have, have gotten public support on. Continue to update municipal ordinance as needed. And then again, to look for that commercial plumbing inspection to continue to provide the best service for the city of Manassia. Kind of an overview again, so community development touches on code enforcement, building inspections, valley transit, dialer ride, community development, urban redevelopment, the facade improvement program, the housing programs, including the Strong Neighborhoods, CBG revolving loans. We kind of oversee the TIF districts, the redevelopment authority, and we work with the engineers on the stormwater utility. So basically, I'm just now going to go into those individual chapters. Please feel free to interrupt me at any time. I did not note everything in here, but just kind of some of the major highlights. And as you can see up on the top header, there is the page numbers there, so if you want to follow along with that, please feel free to do so. So again, on page 57, 58, code enforcement. You know, basically, the major, the major funding is wages of that. You know, I think it was noted today that during public comment that there was a reduction. It, we did, I did reach out to the Finance Department, Jennifer Tassman, the director, and Craig. And it does look like that, that was an error. Mr. Paulzine, the current individual in that position is an eight-hour employee. That was in conjunction with the, with the police department, and that was missed. So again, that's, that would increase that budget roughly $4,000. But basically, it would be that cost of living from the 2020 budget with the, with the 2% crossed. So again, that, that kind of touches that up. Joel certainly does a great job. We have, prior to me coming into the city of Manassia, we actually started to, I believe my predecessor, Greg Kyle, started to work with council to put code enforcement more in line with community development. So that process was started many, many years ago, but never really followed through. So this year was kind of that first year, we really kind of looked to see, okay, how does that work? Having code enforcement within community development and, and, and kind of all those inner workings. So working very closely with the building inspector, it was noted kind of doing some inspections, some backup inspections. Those are basically when, when we don't have an inspector available. Those are the only times that they do, or Mr. Paulzine does provide that service. But there's also that, that very great link with, with housing code violations. So Joel Paulzine is certified in, under UDC or Uniform Dwelling Code. So he does have kind of that building, that residential building inspector tie. So when it comes to these multi-violations or issues with the property, that he can run with that a little bit more, and that's, that's kind of the realm that we're, we're looking to push with him. And I know Chief Saico mentioned earlier, we are, we very much see this position, still working very, very closely with the police department. So we want to make sure that those conversations are happening, and I do have those regularly with Chief Saico to make sure, you know, they're still getting what they need. You know, we've looked at CSOs to try and take some of those, so some of those minor things away from Joe to kind of free up some of his time as well. But again, once they get into that much more complex process, Joe has a lot of experience with, with getting compliance. So, so that's what's, what's great about having that code enforcement officer to really move forward. I guess one other thing that was noted was citations. Citations are something that, that we certainly have done. I believe at the last court case, I want to say that the number nine comes to mind. There was nine violations that had citations at the last court hearing. Again, Mr. Paulzine works very closely with the city attorney to bring those items forward.
Lost you.
Bear, we lost them. Sam, we can't hear you.
Hopefully he'll come back in a moment.
Need more power.
Here, we can open this up to the public before this, we go through this budget or going to do it right after this budget.
Open what up to the public?
We did already.
We did. No, I know that, but I'm talking about the community development budget.
We opened it up to the entire budget, and Mrs. Taylor was the only one who was here, and she commented on all three of them, I believe.
Okay, I just thought that maybe each one, we would ask the public if they're interested in saying something.
Sam, are you? Are you able to hear us?
Is Jennifer on?
Jennifer is on, yeah.
Jennifer, can we get a new updated page 57, 58 then?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. You're welcome.
How are you going to get that to us? Are you going to send it in an email or are you going to have it delivered?
I'm not sure yet. I'll let you know.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mayor, is Sam at home or in his office?
Just gonna say, yeah, is he in the building?
Mayor, I have a question.
He's on the phone, so he must be calling him.
Oh, the mayor is, okay. I was wondering if the code enforcement, is it just on complaints only, or if he sees something, and I see him driving around a lot, if he sees something, does he take an issue with that, or does it all have to be complaint-driven?
James, I I worked with Joel for, you know, almost every year and work with him at times, and I asked him that question. And so he said that, no, most of it is complaint-driven. He said he doesn't drive around the city looking or when he is, unless something sticks out. So that's what he told me.
He could drive around to my district with the campers in the boats. He'd be busy all day, but he doesn't, doesn't worry about that too much, unless it's a complaint-driven thing.
Yeah, and I don't think that should be that way, you know. He's putting out a lot of miles and all us aldermen go through the community, and then we get complaints or you see something. I think that should be part of the job that, if his files out there, that that he should be taking care of it. I mean, our police officers, if, if they're out there and they're seeing something illegal going on, they stop, so.
Not really.
I kind of agree with you, James. That's something that we could talk about.
I put some of miles, and you see them throughout the community and, you know.
Yep.
I think the CSOs could have a little job too. They could be, I think they could take care of the campers in the boats. It's not exactly too, it's a no-brainer to know that the camper shouldn't be in the driveway.
Yeah, yeah, we could talk about that too, yeah.
I mean, you could go a whole gamut. I mean, we, I know for a fact that there are a number of people that are having these fire pits that do not have same thing with dog licenses, cats.
CSOs do that now.
Well, I think Stan's really alderman with a badge. He used to give a badge out. One of my great-grandfathers was an alderman that gave a badge in a belly club. I have his belly club, but not his badge. Stan has a badge, so he's council president, so I think when he saw driving around.
He should have that. I agree, James. Stan.
Oh, years ago. Too, they could make us, they could deputize us.
Actually, aldermen had police powers.
Yeah, that's right. My grandfather had the belly club and the badge. But Stan has a badge. He's the only one of us that has a badge.
Aldermen were abusing it, so.
Oh.
The state took that away.
Well, here's even, I got a question for you guys.
Everybody in the state alderman had that. Had that, Stan, huh?
I have a question for you guys, because you guys having more seasoned time being alderpersons than myself. You brought up the fire pits. My son called night before Halloween on someone behind him on Martin Street.